Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is July 27. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll call?
It's Dave Abdullah.
Here.
Zuhair Abdallah.
He's here, just.
Okay, we'll take attendance.
Walk in the back end.
Moby Dun.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. Mr. Jackson will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Next, we have Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the regular order of business for the July 27, 2021, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council be approved.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of Minutes.
Madam Chair, sorry.
This is the minutes from the special meeting of July 13, 2021. Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 13, 2021. Yep, 2021 is outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the regular meeting of July 13, 2021.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 21, 2021, as outlined in 4C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the special meeting of July 21, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the special meeting of July 21, 2021, as outlined in 4C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearing and Comment, and this is on Agenda Items Only. You have two minutes, and please step up to the microphone here. Okay, see none, we will move on. Next, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Badun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims, 6-1 through 631, as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question on Item Number 631. Although, obviously, picking up of all the trash and all the extra trash that we've had out there because of the recent flooding, obviously, is very, very important. But I had a question, and I just wanted to get a clarification. This is in regards to Item 631, so I guess that would go to the mayor. There was a company hired for flood cleanup for 14 blocks, and the cost of that was $280,000. And on the back of the invoice, that was at 14 blocks at $20,000 per block for a total of $280,000. So although, obviously, I realize this is something that's very, very important, and I'm glad and appreciative of the fact that you got a company to do that, but I had a question in regards to the amount. Not being an expert on how much it would cost to pick up trash per block, but it just, from just for me, it seemed a little excessive. So can you enlighten us a little bit on that, if you don't mind?
Council Chair.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, so that company that came in, we actually talked to several companies, and that was the only company that was available at that time. So as you know, it's the 14 streets that went through, and they did the cleanup. So it was, when we did the tour with myself and the emergency manager, every home was flooded that had all their stuff out there. So there was a lot of furniture, so they were hauling a lot of trash, so it's not just the 14 blocks. It was every home that they actually cleared, almost their entire furniture was outside on the sidewalk.
Okay, so just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, are we talking, because you said 14 streets, because in the document that I received, it said 14 blocks, and that's why I kind of questioned it. So was it 14 blocks or 14?
14 streets.
So total street, 14 of them. Okay, then, and so let me ask you another question to add to that. Being that your administration went out, not for RFPs, but obviously, I presume some calls were made trying to get some estimates, was that, and again, I'm making it clear, I don't know what is normal. I just wanted to bring it up and ask the question. Was that in line or within the norms of the different companies that you contacted? And I do realize, obviously, we have to add an asterisk to this, that under the circumstances, based on it being an emergency, there probably wasn't too many companies available, needless to say. So sometimes I know you got to pay a little extra. Was that in line with the other estimates you received?
I actually talked to several companies, that nobody was available. I talked to any company within a la, within a couple hundred miles of Dearborn Heights. I couldn't get anybody to come in, they were all booked. So the only company that was wanting to do this is a company that their dear is, to their heart, is Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, which they started in Dearborn Heights, they finished Dearborn, and they came into Dearborn Heights. We looked all over trying to find a company to come in, and that was the only company that was, that we were able to get. Everybody was booked.
Okay, I am, as a Realtor, I'm familiar with the company, and they're a very reputable company, so this is no reflection on them specifically. But as long as it was within line, and most importantly, I do know that under an emergency, as all of our parents taught us, you got to do what you got to do, so.
Yeah, we went, I'm sorry, Councilman. So we went to the whole city, I mean, you guys, most of it, I don't know if you guys were on the ground, myself, and the emergency manager, the fire chief, the police, we had FEMA, we had SBA, we were on the ground, we saw the mess on the street.
Oh, it was bad, yeah.
We saw people's reaction. We had to do what we had to do. Get, the first company we were able to get was excess trash.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Try to clarify something with Councilman Abdullah. Before the flood, I don't know, maybe a month or two before the flood, my wife and I decided to clean out our attic. And we brought everything down into the garage, and we called, I didn't want to call, get special pickup from GFL. I didn't know what it was going to cost me, and I didn't want to wait six days with the stuff sitting in my garage. So I called a company like that, and for one-third of their truck with three guys cost me almost $400, just by myself. So you figure what, and I'm just talking one-third of that state truck.
Sure.
So I paid $400 for that. So just imagine all that other rubbish that they picked up and how much that would cost. So I think it was, I think we got a great deal to do 14 blocks or 14 streets at that price.
And Council brought them, they did some streets for nothing, so.
Oh.
Even after we stopped paying, you know, they still went, and they still cleared some streets because they made the promise to finish some streets.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
623, I just want to know, are we receiving monthly report from this company where they cleaned, in what areas they cleaned? The pipe tech.
So, yes, we decide what they do. So we have a list of what they do. But I will be coming back to the council, we were just discussing now the storm system cleanup, not the sanitary. We're noticing something after all the floods we're having is that the storm system now is carrying some slurries in it because it was draining, pushing out as opposed to in. So we'll be coming back to do this. We just have to deal with that, it's a separate issue. But in terms of your question, yes, we will have a list of what areas, and we're keeping track of what flooded areas, you know, like high priorities areas for the next cleanup. It seems like we're happening, it's happening more frequently now.
The reason I'm asking, because some residents sent pictures to all of us about the South End where there is drainage, which are basically totally flooded with trees.
Councilman, yes.
And I'd like to see if we can hire him or hire somebody else maybe to relieve.
So the reason for the blockage is, again, we're noticing, we were just talking about this earlier, we're noticing that because of the flood and the fact, and the fact that the water is actually flowing out of the manholes, it's bringing in with it some slurry. And if we leave it unaddressed in our pipes, it may be a problem in the dry weather event. So these things may actually cause more harm than, so we are, we are taking steps, we're looking at it, this is unusual, we've never had that done before, so we're tracking the areas of, problem areas. So it isn't as simple as just sweeping the top of the catch basins. We need to go into the pipes. So that will be the storm system, not the sanitary. So we will be tracking that, yes, sir.
Thank you for the job you're doing.
No problem.
Councilman Badun.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. While I have you up here, Director Deve, if that's okay, if I can just add one more thing, I know it's.
Yes, sir.
I would like to tell, you know, in an investigation on our sewer system, I think it's time, it needs to happen. Myself, like a many residents, my, you know, just this last Saturday.
Yes.
My entire street was flooded. Our basement flooded again, it's the third time. I mean, we really need to really dig in to see what's the issue. Clearly, these 100-year storms are happening, you know, four or five times now, they're no longer 100-year storms.
Yes.
So the frustration amongst myself, my colleagues, you know, the residents, we need to do an investigation on what's happening with these sewer systems.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I do believe we had this discussion earlier, too. It's not totally us. Explain to everyone so they understand.
So keep in mind that we are a combined system. So the storm, the storm, the storm system, the storm pipe system within the city of Dearborn Heights is not just limited to Dearborn Heights. So what we, what we see, if you look at the watershed, say, the Ecorse or the Rouge River watershed, we are in the lower end, we are on the receiving end. So the watershed has the upwards, it's a large, large watershed. So when, when, when we get an event, like the events we just had, and three or four inches or three and a half inches come on the entire watershed, the system is draining, it's doing its job. So when water gets into Dearborn Heights, your 24-inch pipe is not 24-inch, it's bringing in more, it's 80-plus percent full. So when you go to try to, you know, to add to it, you don't have that entire capacity available to you, it's draining other areas. So we've noticed that in some locations, and we're keeping track of those, in some locations in the city, the water is actually flowing out of the system, not draining into the system for the first, you know, during the heavy, heavy events. So that's when I say we're noticing slurry coming in, and this stuff is problematic because it has nothing to do with leaves blocking the catch basin, it's actually inside the pipes. And we want it to be ahead of that issue because that's going to restrict my flow even more. So the next rain event, even if the pipe was empty, it has the slurry in it, and we need, we need to address it.
I just want to add just one more thing to that. Honestly, on Saturday's rainfall, and I don't want to, you know, I want to move on from this, but on Saturday's rainfall, it rained for maybe an hour. It didn't rain like the, you know, the June 15 rain, but my entire street continued to flood. My parents' street, I've lived in Dearborn Heights since I was in the third grade, I've never seen our community or our neighborhoods flood this way.
Yes.
There's an internal problem, I'd like to believe.
And, and we start by looking at it, so it'll be videotaped first, if we have some issues, then we will look at flushing, you know, I mean, obviously, we can't enlarge the pipes and make it unlimited size, but we will make sure that it's clear and ready for the next event.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes, Deve, since we have you up, I know, we're, you know, but this is an important subject, obviously. So what is the answer to this? And I'm looking for your expertise, you know, obviously, you're pretty knowledgeable on a lot of this type of stuff, as obviously, I'm not. But this was built way back when, and the topography of the area wasn't any different back 40, 50, whatever it is, years when they put that in. Okay, yes, there's a little bit more houses and what have you, I get that. But I'm just saying, in general, like, I had leakage in my basement, and obviously, many others did, too. The challenge you've got is a lot of residents do, like, my wife was asking me, so are we going to redo the basement? And it's like, okay, well, you're going to redo it, but we're probably going to deal with this all over again because there's still no solution. And the solution, at least I seen in Dearborn, and I know it's obviously very preliminary, and Dearborn is somewhat similar to us, okay? It's a little bit bigger city, but somewhat similar to us. But on that one, on their website, they had it at $500 million. So just using that ratio and those proportions, and don't quote me, obviously, but we might be talking 250 million, 300 million, 320 million, whatever the heck it is, definitely not more than a million.
Right.
What do we do, or what do residents do? Because this is not going to go away, this is going to keep, you know, as Councilman Badun mentioned, you know, they mentioned all over everything that this is a hundred, you know, once in a hundred years. No, it's not once in a hundred years, this happened three times in one week. So what is the solution?
So let's start by, yes, the community is old, but you have to understand that there are, there is an element, the climate change has something to do with it, we're experiencing a lot more. And then, and the system is not, is not a bad system, it's designed for what it's supposed to do, and it's doing it. The fact that what we're having, the experience we had in the last three events, is that the duration was too short. So the three-inch coming in at an hour or two hours is not a problem. Now, the plants are cleaning plants, you know, the Down River, and they're being hit like crazy, they're actually bypassing all the time. I mean, I get the reports, they're, they bypassed Friday until Saturday morning. They're bypassing constantly because they can't treat that much in that short period of time. So when you get a wet weather event in a short duration, short duration, so you got three inches in 20 minutes or half an hour, there is nothing that you can do, really.
Well, but there probably is, because if you look at cities, and again, I want to make it clear, I'm not blaming you or the administration or anything like that, but this has been obviously a continuous problem, especially most recently. There is a problem, and this will happen probably again. And if you look at a lot of other communities, they didn't get hit. Well, you know, we got Westland, us, Dearborn, Gross Point, and Detroit, as long as that got hit. What is the correlation there?
Look at the watershed, you're on the low end of that watershed, so look at the entire picture, you're on the low end. So yes, if you were upstream and you were the first to get hit, you will probably be fine. But as they accumulated, you're 14, 15 communities on one system, right? So as the rain accumulates in your pipe, you're getting, it's getting down to us at 80% full. So there is really, now, on the individual side, like, if I was to do mine, I would make sure one thing, my drainage system, my connection, my lateral connection to the city system is clear. And 80-plus percent of the issues we've looked at was limited to the, to the individual house. You were not clear between your, you know, you have a six-inch connection, most of us do, one, very few of us have to. But that connection is the only link between the city system and you. And your drainage, your foundation drains are connected to that link. So if they're doing their job and you keep that link clear, you'll probably be all right.
Can we, can we do, then, can maybe you, you or whoever's, you know, our DPW director, maybe both of you guys, I'm not sure, maybe do a cable thing on it, put it on website, whatever, what every resident should do, because this is not going to go away. It's going to keep coming back again and again and again. Whatever things that you guys recommend to the residents, myself included, to do and maybe recommend, three, four, five, whatever different companies that can possibly do this, or the types of companies to Google to do this, because something's got to be, this is going to happen again and again, it's just so sad.
So let me add a little bit to like what Ali was saying. Flooding on a street during a heavy rain event is actually a good thing, because that means all that water isn't going into the storm system at once. The catch basin covers or the lids, they have various hole sizes in them, and they're basically designed to let in so many cubic feet of water into the system at a time. In many locations in communities where they have these combined systems, they'll put what we call restricted covers on the top, where they have fewer openings, and they're actually designed so that we hold all the water on the street so that we're not putting it all into the system at once, backflowing up into people's basements and things like that. So, I mean, our cat, you know, so I don't know, I've talked, I don't know our system all that well, but I've talked to our guys, we do have areas where we do have the restricted covers on them, you know, and there are better covers that we can put on, but I don't think those are things that we should be using because they're just going to let a larger volume of water into the system quicker, you know.
Yeah, because I understand what those are. On my street, I do have them.
Okay.
In the past, before we had them, sewage would back up in our basements. So like you say, I'd rather watch the water out in the street, just make sure your car's not out there, and watch it go down slowly instead of up in my drain. Also, too, I've been doing some research lately, and I haven't really researched it enough to speak on it, but we might want to check into smart sewers. They seem to be the thing out there now that are helping people with their flooding problems in several cities. So we might want to research that and see if it's something that could work for us.
You're not talking about backflow preventers, are you?
No.
Smart sewers.
It's called a smart sewer. They were just written up recently, if you Google them, I can get you a link if you want.
No problem.
Thanks. Councilman Coniston.
Thank you. We heard a lot, City Engineer Deve and Director Conrad, about pumps failing, a lot of pumps failing, and, you know, with Wayne County, did that affect our, not this last event, but the big one we had?
I heard the same rumors, and I saw that on Facebook. We have no evidence of that. I don't have any evidence. We've asked. So we, we get notified from the plants on the receiving end, the treatment plants, both from the county and Down River, because we're in both of them, right? So the system is working like it's supposed to, it's just overwhelmed. We didn't have any failures.
I read that freeway flooding was from.
That was in Gross Point.
Yeah, I think the only ones that had backups into homes was the Connor Street Station, which affected Detroit in the Gross Point communities. Then any of the freeway flooding was possibly a result of a lift station.
Lift stations, yeah.
You know, which, because the freeways are depressed, all the water has to go into these lift stations, there's like 235 of them around the Detroit area. They lift the water back up to the surface and then pump it out or into a, into a drain. If the power goes out to those, then they can only be run by generators or they have to have the power restored. And yes, the freeways will flood, there's lift stations on Telegraph, you know, so I mean, when Telegraph and 94 floods, there's one there, they're, yeah.
Two in Dearborn failed, I remember, two in Dearborn had, but it was a power interruption, not a pump failure. Lost power, the pump stopped, so it flooded. And that was under.
Chair.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel, and then we're going to move on.
Let's not be mistaken, our system, our storm system has no pumps at all, it's all gravity.
Right.
So there's no pumps involved, so any pump failure. And the pumps he's talking about are when the water drains downhill, they pump it up to a higher level so it can drain downhill again and continue all the way to the station.
We do have a lift station here in Dearborn Heights.
Not for storm, not for storm.
Lift stations, lift stations, not, not.
Not pumps.
Lift stations, we do.
We have lift stations.
We don't have a pump system.
No.
Plus, Saturday night, I was driving home, it started raining, it must come down, just started raining for about five minutes, I went by the creek, all right, it's only up like three feet, I went to my house, my entire intersection was flooded. And normally, my intersection and my drains, when I look at them, they're the same level as the creek.
Right.
So there's, there was an issue with some kind of blockage. And I know once you clean them storm drains, you can't just push that sludge forward, you got to get to a point where you get rid of the sludge, pull it out, you can't just keep pushing and pushing it. And I think that's our problem, is we might have a lot of sludge, and now, we don't know, we haven't been in every, every storm drain, it might be, they might be half full of sludge.
So Councilman, the idea is to go from two catch basins, two structures, we're not just pushing it down, down the line, we just go from, you know, so that's, we have to come back for authorization to bid something like this, but we have to write the specs first. But the idea is to go between two structures, you know, not to just push it down the line.
Right.
Councilman Muscat.
Well, if everybody's done, I've got questions about other items on the agenda here.
Okay, go ahead. Well, that's why I was trying to get us to go on to questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will, I will have my piece at the end of the council meeting about this certain subject then, because I want to get through the, the work at hand. We're going to go back to sewer charges again, 66, okay? We're being charged, sewer charges from Dearborn for $2,669 for water and $25,065.79 for sewer. Now, how the heck am I going to pay that when it doesn't work? The sewer part didn't work. I mean, it's failed us a few times here in the last month. So I personally don't believe we should be paying that to anyone, okay? And I don't think I'm going to get a correct answer from anybody, so I'm going to move on to 69. Down River Wastewater Authority, excess flow, $39,411. How do they know what excess flow that we have when it's in our basements? In everybody's basement, you know, and a lot of that is not the north end, that's the south end, okay? We've been paying that for, for years, and I don't know how they measure excess flow. Is there a meter somewhere that is calculating the amount of flow that we're giving them? And can you tell me if that's the flow from Dearborn Heights, or is it also the flow that's coming in from other cities? Because we're the last, one of the last cities before it gets to the Down River Treatment Plant.
Councilman, is, is, excess flow is not difficult to calculate, it's actually very easy.
Okay, and how do they calculate?
So you have 14 communities on the dual system. So what they do is, we, we report water sales to the operators and each community, so they add them all up, right? So that's the water sale, which means that's where the water that ends up in the sewers. And the combined total is then compared to the main meter coming into the plant. So if you have 1,000 and the meter reads 2,000, then you have 1,000 difference, that's excess flow. That 1,000 gets distributed to the communities participating, the 14 communities, based on their percentage of the system. That's how it works.
As percentage of water that was purchased from each city.
Yes, sir, yes.
So again, we don't, all of our water does not go down the sewer.
Yes.
It goes down the storm drain.
Yes.
So now we're, we're paying for something we shouldn't be paying for.
Yes, so the current discussion, Councilman, is that we shouldn't be paying summer rates on water that we use for irrigations. But that's another issue.
Okay, then I got something here on 612. Let me get to it here on my, my iPad, if you don't mind, please bear with me.
Enzo's Cleaning.
Yes, and that is for.
Highway.
$8,999 natural gas slash hot water belt drive, 3,000 PSI. What did we buy? What is that? Usually, I can make these phone calls, but I haven't been able to, I've been very busy with family members lately. Can someone ask?
Councilman, that was the new pressure washer for cleaning the equipment in, in the garage at the DPW.
$8,000 pressure washer, $9,000 pressure washer?
Yes.
Wow. Okay, and then I'm going to go.
It's also, it was steam cleaner pressure washer, I mean.
Kerosene or something?
No, it's natural gas.
Natural gas.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go to 623, and that's Pipe Tech, okay? And we had a lot of bills there that were emergency cleaning for grease and grease traps. And I was wondering, are we looking into them to find out where this grease is coming from in the area of where they state at Ford Road, Inxter, Amboy, and some places in the South End? How are we identifying where this grease is coming from that they're finding? Is there, anybody can answer that question?
I'm sorry, Councilman, the question is if we track where the grease is coming from?
Yes.
Okay, so the line, the line that you're referring to is the line, the 10-inch here that's problematic behind the new development on Ford Road, Dearborn Fresh and such? That particular line has been an issue, and we know the participants. Now, I'm not sure if we actually bill the users for the cost of cleanup, I will have to look into that.
I mean, we've got Investigation Cleaning Amboy, Richardson, Lehigh, Richardson, West Hills, and Culver. And those are problematic to me because when I first started as a council member, I know they weren't cleaning the jobs right, okay? And there's many, much talk on Facebook that nobody's ever seen anybody clean sewers. Like, I can guarantee you, these sewers are being cleaned, okay? I've witnessed them, and anybody can go and watch them work as they're cleaning these sewers. And I think this company's inherited a mess where they got to go in there and suck all this stuff down instead of pushing it, they're camering them before and after. But if we're catching people or companies putting grease down these.
Yep.
This is affecting everyone.
Yes.
And that's why we flood, because. And that's why we flood, because the water can't go anywhere fast enough or even fill up.
So Councilman, in addition to holding people responsible, we're looking at our standards now. We're requiring larger trap sizes for businesses in an area, in a problematic area. So that used to be a 750 gallon, we're going up to 1,200, that next size up now. So to allow for more capacity to prevent discharge into the sewers, so I don't have to continuously send people, company to clean up.
And I appreciate that, but, you know, we wrote an ordinance that I thought we didn't really need, because a lot of this stuff is covered on EPA rules, I believe.
Yes.
People dumping stuff in the sewer they shouldn't be dumping.
I agree.
And as far as I'm concerned, they need to be fined, and everybody that's flooded because of it, they should be held responsible. That's how I feel, okay? And it's happened throughout the whole city, on the south end for years and the north end now. So again, and I'll be speaking more about that later on this evening, when it's my turn to speak. And then I have another one on 6-30, Wayne County CSO Basin, $35,236, 34 cents. Again, I put on my notes, it doesn't work. Why the hell should we pay? Okay? It's not, nothing is working, as far as I'm concerned, the way it should be. Now, someone needs to prove me wrong, but that's how I feel about it. And that's all I have for the items on...
Thank you.
6-1 through 31, I believe.
Okay, any other discussion before we vote on this?
I want clarification for what they just said. Director Ali, can you explain to the public what is CSO? Why it is mandated by the government? Why we have to do it and spend money on it?
Right, so the Councilman referred to the combined sewer overflow pumping stations that Wayne County operates, so that Wayne County is trying to get out of that business. So they're doing it for us, because we own that station. So they're operating the combined sewers overflow. Basically, you can't have sanitary go into a storm system. So they operate the plant until we either take ownership and operate it, or find an entity to operate it for us other than the county. Are the charges excessive? I know the Councilman seems to think, you know, there are issues with the system, it needs update, it needs capital investment. Can we find an operator other than the county for less money? We've never tried it, it is possible.
Does it have any effect on the flood?
And, I'm sorry, Corporate Councilman Miyaki, you need to speak up, because we're being blocked by people, it's hard to see.
Oh, okay, no, I just raised my hand.
Yeah, no, just ask, say something so I can know you're there.
Sure, this is a matter that actually has come before the council, especially in closed sessions before with Patrick McCully. We have attempted to end up actually having another operator. Wade Trim was supposed to be selected for this purpose. The county has objected to us doing so in the past, stating that we cannot do so under the contract yet that we have with the county. And that issue was discussed and probably should be discussed in a closed session more, especially with newer council members who aren't necessarily familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. Is there any further questions before we vote?
Thank you.
Okay, we are voting on fund transfers and current claims, that's number six. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Councilman Muscat is opposed. It passes. Next is consideration of bids. We have Community and Economic Development Director Hashem request for bids for year 2019, CDBG CV backslash CV3, Senior Staff, CDBG PPE.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the Community and Economic Development Department to prepare specifications and request bids for the fiscal year 2019, CDBG CV, Senior Staff, CDBG Activity, and the fiscal year 2019, CDBG CV3, Senior PPE Activity. The funds have been budgeted and approved in the fiscal year 2019, CDBG CV, Senior Staff, CDBG Activity, and the fiscal year 2019, CDBG CV3, Senior PPE Activity is outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilman Bill Hock?
I just would like to know from Director Hashem, do you have list of the people who are eligible for this fund?
Councilman, the list basically is going to be, this particular, these particular items will be bought for various departments. One of them is the ordinance, the building department, and mostly is for the senior centers. Myself and Director Kim will eventually work out the system of distribution. There will be distribution centers at various departments for senior citizens, anybody over the age of 55, I believe, is eligible.
So they will be available for the seniors at all the senior centers?
And in various, yes, various other locations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, reports from Mayor. We have purchase of properties from the Wayne County Tax Forclosure List.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the purchase and payment of zero Fortson Highway, zero South Beach Daily, 25924 McDonald, zero Stanford, zero South Telegraph, zero South Gully, 5354 South Gully, 3916 Cornell, 4646 Pelham, zero Southfield, zero Culver, in amount of $67,412.63 from the Wayne County Forclosure List, to be paid from account number 101-200-949, period 000. The purchase price includes all delinquent taxes, interest, penalties, and fees due on the property at Wayne County, is outlined in item 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any questions?
Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Well, two things. Number one, I want to clarify for the residents, for the addresses that you see in zero on, those are just vacant lots. And for the other ones, obviously foreclosure properties that we are taking, for tax foreclosure, taken back. I had a little concern, and I don't know if this is going to be directed to the Mayor's office or to our Council, Gary Miyaki, and of course, I want to get the opinion of our council members, but being that there's so many vacant lots that we're going to take back and purchase them, by the way, for all these properties, I tell you, as a Realtor, for $67,000, not a bad deal. But with the vacant lots, can we put, and I'm sure we can, but I just want to make sure from you, Counselor, can we put stipulation that a home has to be built on it and within so many months? And the reason being is, I don't want to sell this to hypothetically Councilman Zohair Abdul-Haq, who buys the lot and just leaves it vacant. And then therefore, in that particular case, he buys it for 3, 4, 5, 10,000, whatever it happens to be, we're making nothing in taxes, obviously, and no homes being built on it. And then potential for whoever owns it to let it go, keep the grass high, et cetera, et cetera, versus a new house going up, and we have, depends on the size of the home, potential from 10 to maybe $30,000 and possibly more in taxes that will be coming into the city. So can we put a stipulation that whoever buys it has to build on it within a reasonable, and we'd have to stipulate what time, a reasonable amount of time, be it six, or start building on it, be it six months or maybe one year?
If I may.
Sure, go ahead.
Two things. First of all, the properties that are being purchased that have a home on them right now are going to be part of the CAP program.
Right.
So it's going to be 2019 and 2021 properties. The vacant properties and other properties, the next step in the process that I've discussed with the Mayor and with Emergency Manager Gavin, is for us to end up doing the same kind of program, but for all of these other properties. The Mayor wants us not to be in the business of basically having, to manage all of these different properties. So we would be going through a process like the CAP program, but we could end up having certain stipulations that buildable lots would also end up being improved within a certain amount of time, just like we have stipulations for the CAP program. It's just we're not there yet in terms of, we wanted to get the CAP program moving along, and then we're going to go, come back with something for other proposals or for other sales of city-owned property. For example, there are a number of people out there who've wanted to end up getting these properties. What I've basically told them and told the Emergency Manager and the Mayor is, we want to end up having a process in place, so it doesn't look like there's any favoritism because someone ends up buying something. So that's the next step in the process, and we'll take your input there, Councilman, certainly into account in terms of how we would structure the program before we come back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions before we...
Go ahead.
Question, go ahead, Councilman Wensel?
With Councilman Abdullah, you got to be careful on this, because if it's sold to an adjacent homeowner who wants to use that property for a bigger yard, you know, they'd have a stipulation to build on it, you'd have to have something written in on that, as far as that goes.
And it's always an option, if I may, Counselor.
Sure, go ahead.
It's always an option, of course, for residents, so it all depends, and we have to decide in a direction that we want to go as a city. Do you want to go in a direction of bringing in more tax base, therefore we could provide better services to our residents? Or just for a neighborly thing? I mean, that's a decision we'd have to make. But when we give that vacant lot to, like, let's say, next door to me, you're giving me a vacant lot for 3, 4, $5,000, and my taxes on it are going to be a few hundred dollars. So therefore, money brought into the city is going to be less versus selling it to a gentleman or a gentlewoman that are going to build a home on it and bring in a tax base of 50... Any new construction nowadays, minimum is going to be 12, $14,000, most of them, in taxes on up, depends on the size of the home. So to me, if we have 10, 15 lots, or whatever it happens to be, I'd rather, personally, I'd rather bring in a tax base into our city to provide better services. Because if you look at our city, we had a $53 million budget versus a lot of the cities around us that have almost triple that. So whatever we can bring in with taxes, we can provide better services.
You know, and also too, if we sell it to an adjacent homeowner, they may be purchasing it to add on to their home too. That's a flip side point.
Or sell it. We could give it to an adjacent homeowner, you give it to me, I buy it for $3,000, I turn on and sell it for 15 or 20, you know?
Well, you'd have to make it where they have to join it with their property.
Right.
Council Chair?
Corporate Council?
These were actually some issues that we had discussed, either having, like, if it's an unbuildable lot and someone just wants to end up using it, then it would probably stay vacant anyway.
Yes.
But we'd have stipulations with respect to the deed that we would end up giving with respect to that. Likewise, with what you're referring to, we would have stipulations that people can't just flip a property that they end up getting from us, because that's not the point. We want to end up having, to the degree we can, single-family dwellings, owner occupied, and that's what we'd be aiming for, just like with the CAP program.
You're welcome.
Councilman Abdullah?
Thank you.
Abdul-Hock?
Director Hashem or the Mayor, do we have any information on any records, how many properties like that were sold in the past? Just vacant lots and never been built on them or anything, and we just tax them at $3,000 or $4,000 value?
Mayor, did you want to answer that?
Do we keep records? Do we follow up on these properties, or the minute we sell them, it's gone?
Well, since I've been in the office, we're actually, that's some of the stuff that, as Mr. Miyaki mentioned, you know, we're going through all the property the city owns, and none of the property, the land, has actually been sold, I don't know for how long. The only homes that were sold are the ones under the CAP program that Mr. Miyaki mentioned. However, we do have a list of all the property the city owns, and that's something Mr. Miyaki and I have been discussing, and also Mr. Gavin, to see what we need to do with the property is. My concern also when I was on council is that we maintain this property, we're just wasting a lot of money, and some residents, somebody that was, that usually comes to this meeting, voicing concerns about adjacent property that they had issues with, especially a home, a vacant home. So this is some of the stuff that I've been looking at, I've been assessing with both Mr. Miyaki and Mr. Gavin. So we'll be looking at that as well, because we do have a lot of property, vacant lands that the city owns. And, but the thing is, you got to be careful with, some of the property that we purchase under FEMA grant, you can't do anything with that property. So that's something, another thing that we were looking at, Mr. Deve and I, is we can use that property as something along the Ecorse Creek for like a catch basin or something, but that's another, something else that we're doing a study on. So we have a lot of things in work right now. We're assessing all the properties that we have and see what we're going to do with the property, so we're not just having it just sit there, and we can use it for the residents, good use for the residents.
I believe, you know, for the benefit of the residents, we should give a priority to the owners of the adjacent, you know, houses to buy these properties. And you can assess them at the actual value which the Wayne County assessed, not the 3,000 or 4,000, because we all know that those properties worth a lot more, but the law doesn't allow us to sell them more than what we acquired them for. So I would really encourage the administration to give priority to the adjacent properties.
Well, we actually, we were working on it, we were full speed ahead with that, but with the flooding, you know, where, as you know, we're putting 150% of our time into the flood and everything else that is thrown at us because of the issues that we have there flooding. But we were looking at that, that's something that we had on agenda to go through, by the way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any further questions before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have adoption of an unrestricted minimum balance.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council through the adoption of an unrestricted minimum balance equal to the greater of either the average cost of two-month expenses of the city general operating expenditures, or to 16% of the total at the end of the city fiscal year. The fund balance will be reported in a city fiscal year single independent audit report in compliance with the Government Accounting Standard Board. Furthermore, authorize the Mayor to implement the necessary actions to achieve the two-month or 16% level effective upon approval of this motion, as outlined in 8B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul-Hock, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
So I have a question for the Mayor on this one. Number one, is this something new? Number two, why do we need this? And number three, the amount? So we'd be taking a budget of 53 million approximately, and we'd be taking two months of that, 60 days of that, that would become available. Fill me in on this as far as the reasoning behind this. Is this something new? Is this something that's been done in the past? What's the reasoning behind this, please?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Well, actually, I'll start, but I know Mr. Shemal wants to chime in on that one as well. This is something that we've been assessing, you know, from some of the audit report, and also something that came from the state. So which, again, we're trying to be in compliance, him being the compliance director, I'll have him answer that question.
Councilman Dave Protem, good evening, everybody. This is 14 years from last time I stayed on this podium. The question, Protem, is why we are doing this? Because we are responding to a findings by Plant Mullen Repair for Years, and it reached out all the way to the State Treasury Department. In 2000, it was December 10, 2021, where we received intercepted, I intercepted a letter from the state warrant us to correct, and they give us a certain amount of time, and we've been working with them toward one of the issue, which is the fund balance, to have a policy. So this is an attempt by the administration to actually secure approval to establish that policy. The standard for fund balance is between 16 and 17% of the unrestricted operating fund. So you're referring to $54 million, which is great in the general expression. In reality, from an accounting point of view, it's not true. The unrestricted fund of the city is about 30 million, 27 million, and the rest are restricted funds. We account for it in our GL system. So when we say 16 to 17, I put 16 as minimum, so we can have this over 16 as much as we can, unrestricted. And when I say minimum, two months of operating unrestricted funds... And when I say minimum, two months of operating unrestricted funds, we need about one-point-five million every month for operating fund, and we needed also another, maybe one million for other operating funds. So, again, this is the best policy you can adopt in our situation right now. We will come back to you later on regarding the situation with what we found in October, because in October, we have the audit report by Plant Moran, the single audit report required by the State of Michigan Treasury Department. Then we decide whether we can amend this or keep it the way it is. But at this time, we need, as we promised the State Treasury Department, we need to adopt a policy.
Okay.
Second question. You have a second question. Why, why is now? Because now, it came after us. In the past, Plant Moran came after us, but nobody responded. So if you ask me, who dropped the ball? The city as a general, the city is three branches. Keep the branch of the Juicy Hill branch, keep it alone. You have administrative and you have legislative. You receive the report from the Plant Moran every year, October. It's about hundred-and-twenty pages. There is a page down there, it tells you exactly what the city is failing to do. I guess, if you read it, either you don't understand it, or you didn't respond, or the administration didn't explain it, but those issues are reparative since two thousand eleven.
Director Jamal. Thank you for the explanation. I have a question.
Okay, I need to finish with Protem Abdullah, because I really wanted you to support this because we need it.
So based, okay, so based on the amount of the thirty million being unrestricted, that would come out to roughly around four-point-eight million. Is that what you're asking to become unrestricted, roughly?
About three-point-two, three-point-three million dollars. That's the correct answer. We consulted with Plant Moran, and that's what really we are looking for. And this is a safety, what we call a safety gate for the council to rely on, in the event that administration neglect, okay, to report on the city status, financial status, meaning the chapter require the legislator, which is the city council, to oversee the performance of the financial situation of the city. So if you see from your periodic evaluation, if you see that you are not receiving enough revenue for the city, you need to take legislative actions to prevent the city from going bankrupt.
Thank you.
So, I mean, this is your responsibility as a legislative body, to prevent the city from going bankrupt. So this particular step, the state want to assure that we have that balance, and you establish a policy that prevent the administration from depleting all the budget and going and using, you know, the balance as the city ended up back in two thousand eleven.
Okay, so I want to understand, is this mandated or recommended?
Mandated.
Mandated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions before we vote on this?
I answered all the questions.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have the Ecorse Creek Commission appointment.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Tawyna Sterlini to the recently established Ecorse Creek Commission, term to expire January second, two thousand twenty-three, as outlined in item eight C. And for clarification, I just want to make sure I spell it for her, just with due respect, T-A-W-Y-N-A. So Tawyna.
Sterlini.
I may be pronouncing it wrong, I apologize.
Thank you. Support by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
So this question is for the mayor, it's on this one, and it's on the second one, but it's a generic question, because I'd asked for this before. Sometimes it's difficult for us, and I'd asked for this, you know, when we approve these, and I realize, of course, the mayor is the one that appoints the different appointments for different commissions, and I respect that, it's part of the charter. But I tell you, for me, as a councilman, and I presume others might need that, too, I always preferred some sort of, at least just an abbreviation, just a sentence or two or three, or maybe you could talk about the person, as to why that particular person was selected, because sometimes, for us, by just getting a name, you know, it could be James Smith or Julie Brown, I wouldn't know.
Like a photo and a biography?
No, just some sort of biography, like, in other words, like, in this particular case with the Ecorse Creek, and I'm not going to name her specifically, because that would not be fair, anybody you appoint, just, let's say it's Dave Abdallah, why are you picking Dave Abdallah? What qualifications did he have?
Well, he was the number-one real estate agent.
No, 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 no. He's a sample.
But, so, I can answer, for this one in particular, we've had several meetings on the Ecorse Creek, and we had a lot of discussions, and she brings a lot of information to the table, where we start meeting and going through and see what's required. So I was really, really impressed with the discussions that we had and the knowledge that she had on the Ecorse Creek.
Okay, I respect that. So the reason I'm bringing this up, and I just want to make sure, because I've seen it in the past, whether with other cities or our city, where sometimes people were appointed just based on, and a mayor can, of course, based on favoritism, for whatever reason, they liked the person, they don't like a person, possibly nepotism, they related to them, friend, whatever. And I just want to make sure, my suggestion, and I'm not suggesting you did that, of course, that we continue to go in a direction where people, like, right now, it makes me feel a little bit more comfortable, that we're picking people based on their qualifications, not based on, you know, possibly knowing, and I'm using generically the term mayor, knowing the mayor or whatever. I don't want friends, family, and relatives on any of these commissions, or, that's my opinion. I want people that are qualified to be, so if you're doing something for real estate, I would understand me. If you're doing something mechanicals and heating, I'd have no clue. All I know is heat gives heat, and that's it. So I'd be a terrible person for that type of a commission. That's all, so.
Cool goes to heat, remember that. Cool goes to heat.
Thank you. Well, I can tell you.
You have to pick Ray Muscat on that.
At this time, we probably want to vote on this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have zoning board of appeals appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with mayoral appointment of Johnny Vindoviski, I hope I said that right, to the zoning board of appeals, term to expire May of two thousand twenty-three. This appointment is to replace Anthony Mifsud, who recently resigned, as outlined in eight B.
Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Again, Mayor, can you give us at least an abbreviation, small biography as to why you feel this person would be the right person for the job?
Well, he has a lot of, he has a bit in his family, him and the own business in Dearborn Heights for the past, I don't know how many years, ever since, I mean, before I even came back, yeah, thirty years.
What kind of business?
High-grade steakhouse.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Any further questions before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is the Warren Valley One Hundredth Anniversary Committee appointments.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
This one will be easy. I approve that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointments of Councilman Tom Wenzel, Library Director McCafferty, Parks and Recreation Director Lawrence L., and Mr. Eric Berzgard, Director of Operations at Warren Valley Golf Course, to the newly created Warren Valley's One Hundredth Anniversary Committee, as outlined in eight B.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun. Any questions before we vote?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Do we go by?
You have a question?
You, you started.
Okay, I'm going to ask that we just ask questions at this point.
The question is, is the city going to supply any funds for this celebration?
There's, we're not.
Or we going to count only on contributions?
Yeah, we haven't even discussed any funding yet. We just have a committee to put a plan together. So if there's any funding, if there's any funding, definitely we'll go in front of council. So as of right now, they're just a committee for the planning committee, that's it. And full disclosure to Council Protem, none of these people are related to me, but I do know Councilman Wenzel.
That's what I want to question.
Councilman Abdullah?
I don't even golf.
Councilman Abdullah?
Go ahead.
Do you have a question?
Well, this is in regards to Councilman Tom Wenzel. He had brought up in the past, and I know some of us have brought up in the past, and we don't need to necessarily address it right now, but I'd just like to bring a reminder to administration that we own the Warren Valley Golf Course, but we have no idea, with due respect to the current operator, is it doing well, is it doing terrible, are we making five thousand, are we making five hundred thousand a year? Is it in bankruptcy? Whatever it is, we had talked about, and Councilman Tom Wenzel had brought it up, that we should be receiving a monthly report ideally, or at least quarterly, as far as how it's doing. I'm not going to ask for that right now, but just as a reminder, I really think this is very, very important, such a big facility, that we hold, with due respect, we hold the operator responsible to make sure that it's operating at the level that we are comfortable with. Thank you.
Councilman Baydun?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and to this honorable committee, congratulations. Hopefully, we will approve this. I think it'll be easy vote. Like Councilman Muscat said, I just want to tell you guys, this weekend, I was actually at the Dearborn Country Club. I sat there, one of my buddies took me in, there was a pool, people were eating, they were hanging out there, and I pondered to myself, I said, why don't we have anything like this in Dearborn Heights? Why don't we have a pool at the Warren Valley Golf Course, right outside on the side of, I know where we have the banquet center? Why aren't we selling food? Why aren't we offering administration for people to come in there, swim, hang out? If this is a great idea, I think this committee could put this together, even if it needs, if we can't get funding through the city, I myself, I'm sure the number-one real salesman and real estate can help out as well in getting some funding, as well as the mayor. We can raise money, and maybe we can allow this for the community, for our grandchildren and our children's children, and so on. I just, it's just a great idea, so to this committee.
Okay.
I really think you guys should really consider that.
Thank you. Is there any further questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Yeah, just to add to that, we had talked about, you know, the banquet facility, I can't remember the last time I went to a function there, a function outside of the city, and it used to be you could call and you could, you know, rent, they were offering for rent. And I know the operator operates Warren Valley and the Inkster Facility, which is still owned by the county, but there are a lot of developers that would want to move in and operate the building as a banquet center.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Wenzel?
Just a little brief history, four or five years ago, when we originally bought the golf course, and I noticed the date it was constructed was nineteen twenty-two, and I said, wow, that's a hundred years ago, coming up pretty soon. And it was designed by a world-famous golf course designer, Donald Ross, he's designing golf courses all over the world. And I talked with the manager, Eric, and he said that, you know, this would be a good idea, maybe we can come up with something, some, we have talked about it on and off for the last three or four years, he's had plenty of ideas. And Kim Lawrence L., she's Parks and Recreation Director, and the golf course falls under the Parks and Recreation Department, so that's a no-brainer to get her involved in this and future amenities, like, you know, possibly a pool or something. And the manager, Eric, he's a great guy, he knows all about the golf course, all kinds of ideas, and Director, Library Director McCafferty, this guy is a historian, he digs up stuff, and I've talked to him in the past six or nine months about this, and I'm sure he's always, he's digging on it already, so he's the perfect person to have. He's trying some different things, and we haven't even had a meeting yet, and actually, the ball's been rolling for a while, but it's going to be something really exciting, and it's going to be a summer-long process, and it'll be very interesting, we'll have a good time there next year at the golf course. Thank you.
Any further questions before we continue? Do you have a question? If you're going to do the, no. Council procedure is questions, and we're getting away from that.
Dearborn Heights Country Club, just think about it.
I will. We'll chuck into it, I'll chuck into that with you. We'll come back. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton, addition of check capture bank services to Comerica and Chase Bank accounts.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I believe this should be note and file, that city council take note and file of this.
Councilman, I discussed it with Treasurer Hicks Clayton, and she prefers we take a vote on it. She's up at the podium to verify that.
Okay, then she doesn't have to verify it, we'll just make the motion. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council receive note and file.
No?
Asking, Councilman?
Said receive note and file.
Asking for your approval, because I'd like the council's approval to move forward with this. There is not an expense incurred because of, we have worked and optimized our performance of our service fees.
Then I'll make that motion, and we'll cut it short.
Go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the information regarding the addition of the check capture bank services to the city of Dearborn Heights, Comerica and Chase checking accounts. The check capture will auto-deposit at the point of entry or receipt of the check and capture check images for future reference, as outlined in nine A.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun. Is there any questions before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And, Madam Chair.
Next, we have Corporation Council Miyaki, authorization to issue an RFP for possible selection of contractor for waste collection and recycling.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the administration to prepare for proposals for the possible selection of a contractor for residential solid waste, autoside collection and disposal, yard waste curbside collection and disposal, and autoside recycling. Prior to issuance of the RFP, the administrator shall obtain approval of the RFP from the city council, from the city council and authorization from city council to issue the RFP. Further, by adopting this motion, the city is not terminating its contract, the current contract with GFL Environmental USA, B, not committing to the city to terminating its current contract with GFL Environmental USA, and C, not committing the city to selecting another contractor in place of GFL Environmental USA, as outlined in nine B.
Support. Support by Councilman Baydun. I do have a question on this. What are we trying to achieve by going out for RFP four years early that would not probably be valid in four years when GFL's contract is over with? Corporate council, could you answer that?
Sure. The contract can be terminated upon convenience, on ninety days' notice, I believe. So in other words, we would be able to test the waters, see if it makes sense, and then, obviously, GFL would be able to also participate if they were so inclined, and if we found that we could end up arranging better services, we could end up coming back and making that decision.
That's going to be hard.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Personally, I've had great relationship with GFL Sam. I've called Sam on many, many issues. He's been courteous, supportive, and gets things done for me immediately. But overall structure, we have a lot of issues in this city, unfortunately. And I see GFL as a company, and not maybe locally, but otherwise, are pursuing other communities, just adopting, I believe, Allen Park. While we are not being picked up on a timely basis, the company is pursuing other entities, other communities, and I think that's a disservice to our community, that we're not looking into making it better for our citizens. Other than that, that's basically what it is in a nutshell to me. Now, again, let me say this again, I got a great relationship with Sam. Sam has been nothing but a great, great help, and without him, I don't know where I'd be, to be honest with you. But again, this comes down, not just for me, it's to the whole city. We got a whole city to think about, and you and everybody on this board has fielded phone calls on a daily basis about problems with trash not being picked up properly. What more else can I say than that? It's the citizens that we work for that are telling us this.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah?
So, when I first seen this, I thought about two things. Okay, so number one is, my earlier days on the council, I remember when we had waste management, and, you know, when you're servicing twenty-three thousand homes, there's always management, and, you know, when you're servicing 23,000 homes, there's always going to be some sort of complaints or another. So I remember hearing the complaints at that particular time about waste management, and I'm sure it probably happened before that, the company before that, and the company before that. So I respect the fact that there's a lot of homes to take care of. But at the same time, to be totally blunt, when we started with GFL, I was very, very happy with them, I was extremely happy with them. I felt overall they were doing a good job, their customer service was excellent, there, unfortunately, he passed away because of COVID, unfortunately, and refresh my memory on the gentleman's name.
Tony?
Tony, Tony Anthony. Excellent customer service. I mean, I would call him, anytime a resident would complain about something, I would call him up, and within a few hours, I'd get a call from the resident, thank you very much, the gentleman took care of that. As I mentioned you, in a past meeting, we had issues with another gentleman, but you mentioned that he is at least no longer in our city, which is great. Unfortunately, though, in the last, I would say, 60 days, there's no doubt about it, there's some sort of a problem happening at GFL. Probably a nationwide issue in terms of, obviously, employment and what have you, needless to say, a lot of different companies, not just garbage-collecting companies have had that issue. But at the same time, there's still an issue there. There's definitely an issue in terms of customer service. I've seen it in many, many subdivisions, I've even heard most recently that, and I was going to say it publicly, that when there was an issue with the flooding, according, and it could be hearsay, you tell me if it's true or not, but Dearborn was given, and this is with due respect to Dearborn, but they had 92,000 residents, they were given 15 trucks to help pick up the extra trash, whereas we were given, and don't quote me on this, I heard two, three, maybe four trucks to pick up the extra trash. I don't remember the exact amount. I might allow you, of course, to comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
The Council Chair will allow you to comment.
Come up to the podium.
But the question to you is, why has then, why has there been such a, I might be blunt, major drop in the customer service? Not in terms of yourself, or the people that we are calling in terms of trying to correct the problem, but it's very similar as we use in any other industry. When I know your name, or when I know, let's say, Anthony's name, or anybody else's name, I shouldn't have to know their name, because if I don't know their name, it means I'm not getting the complaints, and therefore, I don't have to call to say, hey, you forgot this situation, or that situation. The fact that we start to get to know your name on a first-name basis, and we save you in our favorites in our phone, that's not a good thing, because that means we're contacting you too many times to make corrective action on things that are standard. When I first seen this, I thought, you know, I don't know if this is a good idea, but honestly, the more and more I thought about it, if we achieve nothing else tonight, we're putting you publicly on notice that, hey, corrective action has to be taken, and it has to be taken quickly, and we, and I'm being selfish here, our city has to be a priority, not necessarily over other cities, but equally at the very minimal to other cities. Thank you.
Sir? No, sorry, he's got to respond.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm glad that you know my name, and I'm glad I've been able to help in certain situations.
You've done well when I've called you.
Clearly, it's, this problem relates around a labor problem that's not only in the rubbish industry, but in many, many industries in the US right now. We have taken steps, we've taken measures to attract, retain, improve our employee base through bonuses, retention bonuses, attendance bonuses, referral bonuses, and hiring bonuses, and attempt to get the staff. It's still not yielding quite the results we'd hoped for, but we're not giving up either. I want to touch on the flood that you mentioned. We did put out trucks in many, many communities following that late June flood date. There were more than a couple of trucks in Dearborn Heights. We put, we had 350 hours of collection, 371 tons of material collected, just on a couple days alone, just a handful of days. So we did have trucks here, yet we're also trying to keep up with our labor shortage and keep your trash, your yard waste, and your recycling collected. What it has done is it's pushed us to a six-day-a-week schedule, basically, to keep up. What we don't finish, we come back to the next day, and so on and so forth. A lot of the calls you'll get will be, I didn't get my trash collected, and that's true, because we have delayed service right now, because of the staffing situation. So we come back the next day and collect those people where we left off the day before. So those are kind of the, kind of the things that we're dealing with right now. I know we talked about cart delivery in the past as well. You currently have 24 carts out there, orders to be delivered or exchanged, so I wanted to give you that information. But it's been a challenge, it continues to be a challenge, and unlike, unlike anything, it's not specific to GFL, Waste Management is having problems, Republic Services is having problems, the local haulers are having problems, and as the mayor said earlier, when he talked about the flood, he called many, many communities, many, many contractors, and found one that could help. And that's, that's the nature of the business right now.
How much did you charge us for the extra pickup during those days? If you know it off the top of your head?
We charged, I do know it, we charged $225 per hour. Your disposal is paid directly to Woodland Metals landfill because of your disposal agreement, but it's $225 per hour.
So how much was the total charge approximately during that time period?
Um, I can't do the math right now, $50,000, $60,000.
Okay, so the challenge I've got in this particular case is, this was something that happened, as we know, roughly about four or five cities.
Yes.
Of those four or five cities, I know you handled Dearborn, I know you handled Dearborn Heights. Was there any other of those cities that had major flooding in them, specifically Westland, Gross Point, Dearborn, Dearborn Heights?
Our cities?
Yeah, that you handled.
Gross Points we handled, they had, they had.
And you handled Dearborn.
Devastating floods in Gross Point, we're still working on that. Dearborn had devastating floods, you had devastating floods. I will tell you that Detroit had devastating.
But you weren't handling Detroit, though?
Well, we do handle, we handle part of Detroit, yes.
So the reason I'm asking is, why were we, again, I don't know as fact, but when I was told that there was like 15-some trucks extra that were given to Dearborn, and we had quite substantially less, do you know roughly how many extra trucks you brought in during that time period to Dearborn Heights, roughly?
For Dearborn Heights, we had.
As compared to Dearborn specifically?
I want to say there were 25 to 30 trucks on the first Saturday that we came in.
Okay.
At least.
So when we look at something where we paid you about $50,000, which is going to be proportional as to amount of the job that you did, but yet, we paid, and I know it was an emergency situation, to another company $280,000. Had your company had the, and I know it was an emergency situation, I get that, but had your company had the capability to be able to address our issue, we wouldn't have had to have paid, you know, $280,000, over a quarter million dollars, obviously. With that being the case, is your company willing to consider paying us back that amount of money, or at least a portion of it?
I think there needs to be some more research on what was collected for that $280,000. Where were the tons dumped, and how much, how much tons were picked up? Because I know how many tons we've picked up, so I don't know. That's not for me to say, it's, you asked a question earlier, I think it was a good question. How do you justify, what is 14 streets, 14 blocks? What does that mean? How many tons were collected? Because I don't know if you used a garbage truck company, high-compaction vehicles.
The mayor could probably better answer that, I don't know.
I'm not questioning anybody here, but if you used high-compaction vehicles, I would say it's probably reasonable. If you're putting it in dump trucks, and pickup trucks, and U-Haul trucks, it's a different story, it's a different animal altogether. The tons will tell you the story.
Okay, so let's move forward now, another 90 days from today, because we know this unemployment is going to be roughly over, give or take, sometime in September. And from, I've heard from a lot of people, a lot of people still have some extra money left over, so some people may not, you know, possibly, there may not be jobs available, I don't know, I'm not an employment expert. But with that being the case, let's move forward 90 days from today, and let's presume we still have GFL. What solutions do you have in place, provided we are right now in October? What solutions do you think you have in place? Because as a major corporation, I'm sure you're looking forward to the future as far as what your plans are. So what are your plans for 90 days from now, as far as how this problem that we are experiencing right now will be either eliminated, or much drastically minimized?
Since we've put in these hiring bonuses, and retention bonuses, and so forth, we have seen some growth and some traction there. For instance, yesterday, we just about finished everything in Dearborn Heights yesterday, made about 10% or 12% of the yard waste didn't get collected, and we came back to this morning. Today, when I walked in here, six, quarter to seven this night, we're on track to finish in Dearborn Heights tonight, and then be on good track going forward on Wednesday, and so on and so forth. So the ability to attract people now is starting to get some traction, and we're able to put more trucks on the road than we've been able to do all spring. So as the, as the yard waste season grew, our staffing for that was growing, and then we ran into that, into that situation where the money, the federal money out there was interrupting us. So we're starting to get some traction again, I think we're going to be all right, I think you'll be all right by early, early August, first or second week of August, we should be in much, much, we should be in much, much better shape going forward.
Thank you.
Council Chair, one other item here, please.
I've got Councilman Baydun.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Council, it was so long. Councilman Bill Hawk, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Nothing against Mr. Baydun. Mayor, you paid $280,000 to pick up garbage, and I understand it's, you know, emergency. Are we going to deduct this from the sum of his contract, or this is extra from our budget going to go out?
Well, there's several things that were mentioned. Okay, so we did have, as you know, the council, I brought it in front of you to sign, there was an addendum to the contract for GFL to pick up flood waste, or flood debris. Obviously, again, you know, most of the councils were not there. I know you guys have received phone calls, but my office was like an operator, you know, everybody was working on just complaints, just with garbage pickup, not just debris. We had, there's some days, we had three, I mean, even today, I've gotten several calls and several emails from residents. They have two, sometimes three weeks with yard waste, just sitting there, wet, you know, disgusting, and sometimes even their garbage was not picked up two weeks. And again, the reason why I put that on the agenda today is because, I mean, I can tell you, between myself, my chief of staff, my emergency manager, and Stephanie, we have probably hundreds of calls every day, just dealing with just garbage, you know, not including everything else from the city. And that's, I'm not even talking about DPW, even DPW was getting calls, and they finally started routing their calls to the City Hall, I mean, to my office. So that's one thing I wanted to clarify, that's one of the reasons. You know, the residents, they spoke, and I'm going to listen, and, you know, they keep asking me, what the hell's going on, you know, why, why can't we do anything about this? And that's the right reason why we're doing, we're going to do a test on this RFP to send it out. We've, I know, when I was on council, we sat here, and Sam, you know, again, thank you for everything that you do, and you had several people here several, a couple of years ago, right before COVID, and we had the same issue, we were talking about the same thing, but nothing got done. And it seems like, I don't know what happened, just the last, you know, three, four months, you know, even before the flood, we were still, we still had a high number of complaints, you know, from residents about their garbage not being picked up. You know, I know there were some issues that were corrected, there were some, you know, somebody was on the street, you know, one of, one of your staff using vulgar language with some of our residents. I don't know if that person's still employed with GFL. You know, there's some residents calling, they're saying that some drivers are taunting residents, they're chasing, they think it's funny. And again, you know, the residents spoke, and I'm going to listen, you know, and as I said before, you know, I, you know, I did this here when I was overseas, you know, for people not outside the United States, and I'll tell you what, I'm here to represent the city of Dearborn Heights on my residents. And I'm going to be clear, that's why I put this thing out for RFP. I'm sick and tired of, you know, lack of service, or anybody not doing something for our residents, because our resident, we're paying top money for everything in the city, not just garbage, but everything else, and I'm going to hold everybody accountable for anything that comes in front of me. When residents speak, I'm going to listen. So basically, that's why I put this thing here. And I don't know what's going to happen with, you know, again, you know, we have to go back and rethink, you know, whatever money we paid. I know FEMA, as I mentioned also at the last meeting, when we put this thing out for budget for the garbage, from the debris, that FEMA, you know, is asking us for how much we spent, so they might reimburse us for this amount, so, and again.
Mr. Baydun, Councilman Baydun had suggested last time that we go and give you authority to spend the $300,000 in emergency to clean the rest of the city. Is this the amount you're asking for, or are you asking for more money? And if that, if we approve this, how are you going to divide the work between GFL and any company we pick?
Well, no.
Is there any liability?
No, 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 no.
You have a misunderstanding. This is to go out for a totally separate company, but not to clean up the flood stuff.
Well, Council Chair?
If we go for a separate company, are we going to eliminate anything with GFL, or are we giving them 90 days?
Let Corporate Council Miyaki speak on that.
Yes, this does not either, one, give GFL 90 days, and it does not necessarily guarantee that we will not select GFL if we go through the full process in terms of the RFP. This is a preliminary step, administration ends up preparing an RFP package, brings it back to this body, confirm whether or not it needs any tweaks, and then we end up issuing there based on your vote. So this does not terminate the relationship with GFL, it simply puts us into a position where if we feel we can do better, then we're prepared to do better.
I have a question, too, though. Didn't the administration ask GFL to concentrate on the flood damage items and not pick up yard waste, if I remember correctly? Was that?
Yes.
That's what happened, I thought.
We were asked to suspend yard waste, in order to get some of the flood damage, because the flood was starting to smell, and it was, it was, there was a lot of it, so we were asked to suspend yard waste collection for a, for a week, yes.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Baydun?
Thank you so much, and with respect to that comment, I want, I just want to keep it out there, that even if we suspended to pick up weight, you know, the trash, regular waste trash, the debris is still out there, even when GFL was out there, and with us having to spend $280,000, I just want to, I just want to put it out there. A resident reached out to me, who's, you know, emptying out his debris, and I want you to know the story, and I want to say this publicly, as he was emptying out his debris, there was two men in the truck, and they almost got into a physical altercation, it was a verbal altercation. So I automatically reached out to our emergency manager, and I said, hey, there's some GFL guys, they got the truck numbers, and he said, I'm going to reach out to my guy, Sam, that's there. I said, you know, Lee, somebody needs to go out there, these people are about to get into a physical altercation. So Lee went out there, and he, the gentleman explained, these are fans from, you know, that I had to open up, there were several fans, they refused to take it. Our emergency manager, who works for the city, walked up to the two gentlemen and said, please, just let us put those in there. They swore at him, they cursed at him, and they said, we're not taking it. So he took it and put it into a personal vehicle, drove it to City Hall, and threw it away. That's the things that we're dealing with. So when a resident calls me and says, a guy wants to beat me up, I, I'm so happy that the, that our administration put this forward. I mean, because no resident, including our emergency manager, deserves that. It's ridiculous. And the last time Councilman Abdullah spoke with, I believe, the gentleman that's sitting here, here, he made it very clear, this is not acceptable, there's no excuses, it was a holiday. There's always holidays. There's no excuses as to why somebody's trash, my next-door neighbor's trash isn't picked up, but my trash is picked up. There's no excuse for that. So yes, I'm so happy that our administration is doing this, I, honest to God, I really am. And I'm sorry, I'm saying this with a lot of emotions, but I'm frustrated. Every single day, I have to pick up a phone call, or look at an email, or look at a Facebook message about a resident that doesn't have their trash picked up. It's literally garbage.
And Council Chair?
Councilman, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I also want, I want to add something else. I mean, some of the biggest thing frustration for residents, I mean, I understand, you know, about the issues that you have with labor issues, but the biggest thing also on residents, you know, you're asking them to remove their vehicles from, from the streets, so you say their pickup days is on Monday, so now, sometimes you don't come back for like two or three days, and their vehicles are in the street, you can't bring your trucks to the city. I mean, that's the thing, it's like, it's chaos, it's ridiculous that our residents have to go through this day in and day out. You know, they call us like, hey, should we remove our cars? When is, when are our trash going to get picked up? So that's the biggest problem that we have, is we tell our residents, you need to get your cars off the street, and we get calls from residents every day, okay, their car's supposed to be off the street, okay, they get them off the street, well, the next day, they don't pick up their garbage, and, you know, your drivers can't get through our city. Now we tell them, okay, you got to remove your cars off the street again. So it's frustrating, you know, because it seems like our, my administration is working just for, just for the trash pickup, you know. It's hard to concentrate on just doing what's, what's, what's for the, I mean, the other city operations. So a lot of us are spending a lot of hours. You know, my emergency manager is here, he's spending seven days a week, and I've seen him here, I've been here seven days a week, and he's, that's all he's doing, is answering stuff about trash, and it's ridiculous. I mean, that's, you know, and I would keep going back and forth, but I hope this passes, we need to put out for, you know, market, and just see what's going on.
Okay. You need to say, Madam Chair, 'cause I can't see you waving your hand all the time.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
If I may. Just two points. One of them is, you know, the mayor and I discussed this, we believe that this is a very measured and thought-through approach. In other words, we don't think it's radical, it's not like we sat there and said, just terminate them and not have anyone. So I think that this is a very prudent way to end up approaching this. The second thing is, is my recollection is, is that it was not the administration that said, don't do the yard waste, it was like, yeah, prioritize the flooding items, but we want you to get to the yard waste as, as well, as soon as you can. And then we still have this delay that's been referred to by the members of the council, and that still is a concern for us. And that was, that's, that's, that's what the issue is, so, thank you.
I was thinking, since COVID hit, everybody's had problems, even Myers is no longer open 24 hours. And through it all, they've did the, they've done the best they could. They could have quit and left us hanging, saying they just don't have people to cover the contract and just left. They, they didn't leave us hanging, they tried their best, is the way I look at it. There's a lot of places, like I go to McDonald's, it no longer is a five-minute trip through the drive-thru, sometimes it's 25 minutes, and there's only three or four cars in front of you. So everybody is struggling right now, and we all need to see how it turns out, especially if September is the time where people are supposed to be back to work. Go ahead, Councilman.
I just wanna be fair, because my personal experiences with GFL and their employees, honestly, and I'm just being fair, the gentlemen that have showed up around my block have always been, and I've had different people over the years, they've always been courteous, polite, and I've had good working relationship with them. They don't know who I am, but every time I've walked out to talk to them, they've been courteous, polite, and good people, so I just wanna make sure and give them a shout out.
Yeah, I haven't had a problem either.
Neither have I with people.
Thank you for that.
But again, Councilwoman, Council Chair, you know, when somebody has a labor problem, you don't go out actively seeking new contracts with other communities. You take care of the communities that you have. So, you know, you go out and you just picked up Allen Park, so now you've got more people working there, and our garbage isn't getting picked up. That may not be your responsibility, but that's GFL's responsibility. How can you sit here and tell me that we're all gonna be good, but then you're actively seeking other communities when we can't get ours picked up? That bothers me. That really truly bothers me.
Let me answer that.
Great point.
I'd like to answer Mr. Baydun's question too, about that cardboard situation, that was a Saturday afternoon. Lee and I, we spoke, and we took, we took appropriate action with that, it was inappropriate, and we took appropriate action. We talked on a Saturday afternoon when that happened a few weeks ago. Mr. Muscat, the Allen Park bid was bid a long time ago, we were awarded that, it just so happens that the award and start date was right in the midst of all this flurry of activity.
But they're getting good service, that's the problem. And I know, I have relatives that live in Allen Park, and they've got excellent services, nobody's missing anything. So Allen Park doesn't get missed, why the hell should we get missed, and we've been here longer than they have? That's my, that's my issue, okay? Because I can show you my telephone right here, you can pick it up and go through all the text messages and the emails that I get on a daily basis, and it's very frustrating. I told you before, I got a big chunk missing out of my rear end here, 'cause I'm at the bottom of the food chain here, okay? And I'm getting tired of being nibbled on.
Okay, Councilman Baydun.
And last question, and Sam, this is to you and on the record, and to the public, and to the residents that are watching. Can you give them a promise today that this is gonna stop, and our trash is gonna continue, it's gonna start getting picked up, and we're going to get good service moving forward after today's meeting? Can you make that promise to our residents? Can we at least give that to them?
Yes, 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 I can. And what I told you is, today, I expect it to be complete today, we've gotten some traction, we're starting to put more trucks on the road as we get more employees hired, trained. We want them trained properly, but it takes a little bit of time, but I'm thinking by mid-August, we're gonna be back to speed and on track with collection. The mayor made a good point as well, when we are delayed, when we have that delayed service, it compounds, it creates the phones to ring, it creates the parking problem on the street. So I understand those problems.
Sam, and one last thing, Sam, like what Councilman Abdullah said, clearly, we have enough trucks that was able to go into Dearborn, a little bit of Dearborn Heights, you know, and all, you know, Rose Point, Detroit, and pick up all the, you know, majority of the debris that we could. You said the amount of ton that you picked up in that stretch of, you know, two, three weeks. Can we do a blitz for the next week instead of having to wait till mid-August? For this next week, send as many trucks to Dearborn Heights, pick up all the trash, and we're not delayed for that one day or six days? And we're all back on track, so we don't have to wait till, you know, the first two weeks of August to August 16th or 17th? Well, that would be two weeks, though, he's saying mid, you know, the first two weeks are, you know.
Yes, we can, it would have to be a weekend, it'd have to be a Saturday.
Then let's just do it.
That offer's been made, and it still stands, we can do that. We were asked not to.
And no cost, since, you know, because the cost is right now, is that residents don't have their debris picked up. We, I mean, we paid for this contract, we agreed to this contract, clearly the contract has been breached to some extent. Can we just blitz Saturday and allow the residents all the trash to be picked up? Can we give a deadline by the Saturday?
We, I can work with administration and get something scheduled, yes.
Can we do that?
We need to assess everything, like I said, let's, we'll talk about it tomorrow.
You know, Fenton was just signed by you guys June 1st. I mean, that's last month, and you added another big community, Fenton's not small.
Councilman, you need to be recognized. Do we have Councilman Abdullah?
Sam, just a quick question. Tony, God rest his soul, and like I mentioned, unfortunately, because of COVID, we lost him. But I remember what he used to do, and I was just asking the council chair about that, she remembered too, I remember we talked to him at the council meetings. You guys would have your big trucks that pick up the garbage, and in his job, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, would be following the different big trucks, right behind them, I don't know, within a few minutes behind them, and then just looking on both sides, just seeing what possibly has been missed. I mean, let's face it, there's always gonna be a human error. Do you still have that type of logistics in place, where there's another pickup truck of a supervisor driving behind the big trucks to make sure that everything's been picked up, nothing's been missed? If it has been, turn back around and do it?
Yes, we, yes, we do. We actually have Akil Alexander out here, and also a supervisor, his David Williams and/or Nick Allen out there as well. Extra support, I think I committed to that.
Then how are, then if you got three people there, how are they still missing it then?
You have, you have two basically each day, but a third one, they switch off.
Okay.
So they're, they're driving, still driving by flood damage material, if it's there, we're getting what we can, if there's.
I'm talking about garbage for right now.
Well, there's, that's where the staffing shortfall may come in, so if we're short a truck, drive for the day, there may be a certain area that didn't get picked up. But they're aware of that, and they come back to that the next day.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we should take a vote, we've discussed this long enough. Do you have a question?
Yes, a question. I drive around the city, and this is before the flood, and I see these guys in these garbage trucks that have the automated can pickup, and they're out of their truck picking up large items. And I stop and talk to them all, I must have talked to 10 or 15 different guys, and a girl. And they all say, this is not our job, we shouldn't be getting it out of the truck, we're an automated truck, we need bulk trucks to go around. He said, that would solve all the problem, we could, you fly down the streets, pick up the cans, bulk trucks will come by later and pick up the big stuff. Can you supply us with more bulk trucks? 'Cause I've seen the bulk trucks.
The rearload trucks.
Yeah.
We do put rearload trucks in, but the automated front loader has the ability to take these chairs, the driver steps out, it's a low-entry cab, so they step out, they grab the chair, put it in the truck, it's an efficiency thing. Now, if there's a four mattresses, or a dresser, or a large screen television, it's a different story, that's when that bulk truck has to come around, pick those items up.
Can we get more of those trucks? 'Cause I, see, everybody I talk to say, man, I wish I didn't have to get out of the truck, you know, 10 times on the street. I wish I could just go by bam 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 and pick up all the.
Yes is the answer, yes.
'Cause we're only here.
Thank you.
Okay. This time, everybody ready to vote?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam, for informing us of everything. Okay, this is for authorization to issue RFP for possible selection of contractor for waste collection and recycling. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miaki, payment procedures.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the mayor to pay necessary expenses without prior authorization of the city council pursuant to City Charter, Section 8.9, up to previously authorized budget amounts in the following categories and subject to the following. A, payments may be made for employee wages, salaries, benefits, contributions, and contractually mandated items. B, payments may be made for utilities and insurance where the city council has previously authorized the city's contractual relationship with the provider. C, payments may be made for the purchase of materials, goods, supplies, and other things or things for a cost not to exceed $1,500. Additionally, pursuant to the City Charter, Section 8.9, the total amount of such payments made between any successive regular meetings of the city council shall not exceed $1,500,000 or such other amount as the city council may from time to time establish. Further, Corporation Council Miaki is directed to prepare one or more appropriate ordinances, resolutions, and/or policies to formalize and improve the city's payment procedures as outlined in Item 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydun, is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
So I had a question on this one. First question is, the 1.5 million, okay? The $1,500 situation, I've been very familiar with that, and I've know we've used it for many, many years that I've been on the council, and it could be just necessarily just the way we've done things, not necessarily from the charter, so maybe you could talk about that, Councilor Miaki. But more importantly, in this motion, it says there, and I'm gonna go right to it, the total amount of such made payments between any successive regular meetings of the city council shall not exceed, and this is a key point, $1,500,000 or such other amount as the city council may from time to time establish, and it said, oh, I'm sorry, to begin the sentence, it says additionally, pursuant to City Charter, Section 8.9, the total amount, blah, 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 1.5 million. With that being the case, when I pulled up, two things, number one, I had, I want to give a clarification, and I also had a little bit of an issue of 1.5 million dollar amount over one period, but also, when I pulled up the Charter, Section 8.9, nothing was mentioned in there in regards to a specific amount of 1.5 million, and I have it printed right here, if you needed it. So can you clarify that for me?
Sure.
I believe that would be.
Go ahead, Corporate Council.
Yeah, thank you. The City Charter, Section 8.9, says the total amount of such warrants issued between any successive regular meetings of the council should not exceed an amount as the council may establish, from, may from time to time establish.
Correct.
So the council can come up with the amount. What I did is, I spoke to different department heads, and tried to come up with an aggregate amount. This includes, by the way, all the payroll, all the benefits, utilities, insurance, and just a lot of other items. And it also has to take into account that there may be some times where you have one regular meeting, like in December, and nothing until January. So the idea was to essentially end up having it where sometimes you have, for example, three payrolls in a month, that you make sure that you have enough, enough of a fund to cover that. And I discussed that with our HR director in terms of an amount that would be safe under the circumstances, and then I spoke to our comptroller, and spoke to him about other amounts that would end up being included, and combined amounts came out to a little under or a little over, I think, 1.4 million dollars, and that's how we came up with the 1.5.
But one of the challenges I had with that, counselor, is in that, it says, it doesn't imply, it states it clearly, it says that pursuant to City Charter, Section 8.9, and I'm just saying, it is not in City Charter, Section 8.9, all it says in Section 8.9 is basically, in general plain English, at the city council's discretion.
Oh, Councilman.
And then, and then in that sentence, it says, or such other amount, the city council may from time to time establish.
Right.
So what I'd like personally, and clarify for me, is if you don't mind, I'm sorry, excuse me, if you don't mind, as an attorney, by putting that number in there, this is implying that that's a part of our charter, and it's not. The 1.5 million is not a part of our charter, so clarify that for me, if you don't mind, please.
Actually, I disagree with you. That reference to the charter is to say, this is what section of the charter that you're referring to, so that people who end up seeing this motion know that it's pursuant to that section. In other words, you are establishing that amount. In the charter, it says you may establish an amount. This is the amount that you are establishing pursuant to Section 8.9.
But my opinion.
That's what that reference is.
My opinion, the 1.5 million should be in there as just, as a part of the sentence, which says, or such other amount as the city council, just keep it as, as an amount, as the city council may from time to time establish versus the 1.5 million.
But you have to.
'Cause that implies that that's the amount that's part of the charter, and I disagree with that.
But, Councilman, you have to establish an amount. In other words, you have not established an amount. That's why you have to do it, that's why there's the reference to Section 8.9. In other words, what it's being said here is, we're doing this pursuant to Section 8.9, this is the amount that we are establishing from time to time, we are starting with 1.5. We may change it to something else, we may lower it, we may increase it, we may get rid of this motion entirely. But the, the important thing to remember is, the city has been operating for decades, as far as I know, as if this has been done. And it hasn't been done up to this point, as far as we can verify. That's our problem, is that I, you know, I've been doing work for the city for decades, and it's always been, oh, it's just, you know, if it's one, you know, if it's $1,500, it's perfectly fine. I go through the policies and procedures, I had a discussion with the city clerk about this, it's kind of like, this is gobbledygook, there seems to be references to it, there's $500, but there doesn't seem to be any real specific authorization. So this issue ended up arising when the city treasurer, Mr. Jamal, you know, Mr. Jawad, ended up having discussions about some of these things, they raised this issue, and I said, well, you know what, I don't recall specifically doing this, we should end up making sure we do it, and do it right away, otherwise, people could argue that we can't pay payroll.
Council Chair, can I make a suggestion, please?
Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
I know we have an election next week, okay? And it's not a regular scheduled week for us to meet, but after we discuss this, if we can make a motion maybe to have a study session immediately after the election on Wednesday or Thursday, to discuss this. Why? Why would you deny a study session?
Election day is busy enough, and this is a polling, this is a polling location.
I didn't say the day of, I said after the election.
Oh, I thought it meant the same day, and I was gonna say, this is a polling location.
After the election.
Okay, you gave me a heart attack, okay?
No, I would, I gotta work that day anyway, so, but I'm just saying, we need to discuss this further, and we're not gonna get anything done here, because I know, I don't understand it, Mr. Abdullah doesn't understand it.
Okay, let's refer to a study session then.
But I didn't make a motion, so we would have to refer it to.
Yeah, let's just get this, let's get past it.
There is a motion on the floor, and seconded.
So, okay.
To modify it, Mr..
I will, I will, and I will gladly modify my motion, 'cause I respectfully, I, you know, you have a lot more law degrees than me, but I have none, but I just, I don't like, I'm not comfortable with the verbiage personally. The 1.5 million being in there implying that it's part of Section 8.9. So with that being the case, I'd like to amend my motion to take item, is it 9C?
9C.
9C, back to a study session per the council chair's approval.
And have an immediate.
Support by Councilman.
Well, that's her discretion.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's been, all those, all those opposed?
No, I said, was there any discussion after the second?
We're going to a study session, there's no motion on the table to discuss. Once you go to a study session, you go to a study session, that's where the discussion happens.
Most are seconded, and there should be, is there any comments?
Yes. Yes.
It goes to the study session for discussion.
Yeah, but you still have to have a comment.
That's the reason we have a study session. There's no more discussing it here.
If you make a motion, seconded, and then any discussion.
Is that correct, Clerk? The Clerk says, if we go to a study session, we don't discuss.
After we vote on it.
Before we vote on it.
Yeah. Well, we took, made a motion, it was seconded, then there should be asked if there's any discussion before the vote.
But the discussion would happen in a study session, right?
Well, he wants to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that, this is, you know, $1,500. I spoke to, believe it or not, my ice cream man, who's very knowledgeable in city events and procedures, more than you'd think. And he brought up a good point, is why would you allow anybody to spend $1,500 without it being available for the residents to look at? It's their choice to look at it now, but everything, every penny we spend should be published somehow and have the residents be able to look at it after they want, instead of just allowing this $1,500, this week, next week, next week, next week, next week, to be given out. It should be available for the public to view, every penny we spend. Not up to $1,500, but every penny we spend.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask our compliance director, are we...
Can we do that at the study session?
That's what the study session should be for.
Yeah, because, you know...
I will state that we do have people at public comment, and I expect that to go a long time tonight. So, let's keep this a little shorter, if we could. All right, next we have...
Oh, we gotta vote on that.
We already voted?
No.
Oh.
We haven't voted yet.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miyaki, selection of cap developers.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council select the following firms as the developers for the City Action Preservation Cap Program for 2021. Dynamic Full Consulting LLC, Edline Consulting LLC, FPJ Investments LLC, and HP Tax Foreclosure LLC. Additionally, for each such developer, the city council approves and authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute on behalf of the city the respective developer agreements for the 2021 Dearborn Heights City Action Preservation Program submitted by Corporation Council Miyaki, together with his letter dated July 19, 2021, related to the selection of cap developers, as outlined in 9d.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdalhak. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair, yes.
Councilman Abdalhak, go ahead, please.
Yes. First, I would like to know who established this list and based on what? Anybody?
Councilor Chair, if you want me to answer, but Emergency Manager Gavin can as well.
Go ahead, Gavin.
Yes, we went out for bids, and these were the four companies that submitted bids. Administration decided, since there was that four, we'll go forward with them. Three of them, we had prior dealings with in the past, and we have one new company, Endline, this time around. So, we'll split up the homes between those four groups.
From the past, I see those developers come in, they buy them at low price, they fix them, they sell them, we collect taxes. But I believe that there are some nonprofit organizations in our city are interested in getting those homes too, for housing battered women who are in our city, and some people who have domestic violence against them. They like, basically, to rehabilitate these homes, and they will house these people at no cost. And I believe we owe it to our women who are, basically, experienced this kind of behavior, at least to give a little hand and little help. And I would like to add to this list, the Amity Foundation has one of the people who are selected, and I would like them to participate and get some homes to do that.
Counsel, Corporate Counsel?
Well, the difficulty is that they did not put in a proposal, and they haven't shown that they're capable of actually doing that. We had these four potential developers who had, they've all put in their appropriate proposal, and they all appear ready to go. And part of this program, or actually, the whole gist of this program, is to try to have the developers come in, rehabilitate these properties, and then sell them as single-family dwellings that are owner-occupied. So, that's the real gist of this program, and that's what the council approved in the RFP package that we ended up issuing. And so, that would be a very different direction from what this council previously...
This organization has the money, is capable, and it has the references, and it has the reputation, and it is very well-known in our community. And I would like, you know, to possibly postpone this table it until, you know, we see, give them a chance to see if they come and submit their bid.
Madam Chair.
I think we'd be cheating the bid procedure.
Waiting for that.
One of those companies I do not like whatsoever, and I'm not going to mention their names, and I don't want any hint or any, you know, anything whatsoever that they got selected for one reason or another. I would like to table this, to clarify that, and give that Amity Foundation a chance to come in and bid on them, because, like I said, we owe it to our women in this community to have a place that they can go to if they have been beaten or mistreated by their spouses.
Who made the motion?
Corporate Counsel, did you want to respond to that? Is this something...
I think I already did. I think that would be a council decision, but I think it's inconsistent.
Again, I spoke to the gentleman who's in charge of it. He's very interested, and for one reason or another, he didn't have a chance to bid on it. But I have no beef in it. I don't have anybody who's battered in my house or mistreated, so they can be housed or given help. But I think it is something very humane to do in our city.
Okay, what would you guys like to do?
Ma'am Chair.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. We can pass it, and then they can also, also...
They won't be able to. How can they bid?
Would you like to...
How time sensitive this is.
Problem is, is that we get these properties, and then we normally try to give them right away, and the more time we wait with them, then you potentially have squatters and other things. As a matter of fact, we've had some problems with the 2019 properties with respect to that, in terms of even fraud on one of the properties and so forth.
Would you like to change your motion, Counsel?
Well, with all due respect to your Councilman Abdalhak, I think as far as, do we know for certain that Amity Foundation would be interested in...
Yes, they are.
I do know them as a reputable and honorable organization. They're active, for a fact.
The actual gentleman was here earlier, I'll see who has spoken, but I think I would like to see this being tabled and sent back, and potentially giving them the option to be able to bid on this as well.
Do we exclude some people from that process that...
No, I just don't...
Wait a minute, no, no. Corporate Counsel? I'm sorry.
Yeah, my...
Corporate Counsel, were there others that we didn't qualify that applied? I mean, this is the amount of people that were qualified.
Yeah, we basically...
Did we reject any people?
We did not reject anyone. However, again, remember, the idea is that the properties would be rehabilitated, sold to a single-family, as a single-family dwelling owner occupied. The idea that they would end up being sold to end up becoming some sort of a shelter is inconsistent with the program. Perhaps, as an alternative, there might be some other properties that the city has, and if there is a need for that, it can be done outside of the context of this program. But it's really very strange, I mean, you know, just very inconsistent with the underlying basis for this program, to put in a nonprofit, because then the property's not even getting back onto the tax rolls. It will end up basically being, you know, non-taxable, and, I mean, it seems inconsistent with the general idea of this program.
So, I was next.
Councilman Abdullah, Councilman Badun, and then Councilman Conston.
So, and this one, when I got, when I received the package and went through it, and I want to make it clear, A, as you know, I'm very blunt. I'm not afraid to say something or call something out if it needs to be, but at the same time, I'm also very direct in saying, I'm not implying anything by what I'm about to say. But I just found it very, and again, I'm not implying anything, but I just, I couldn't, I didn't get it. Because we've gone through the cap program multiple times. We didn't do it last year, and I'm not sure, 19. I know for sure we didn't do it last year. But in past years, with me on the council, past six, seven years, whatever, it's been consistently, we've had, we've had to do a study session for the number of people that came forward and said, I'd like to buy houses. And if some of you guys have been on there, you know, we'd have 12, 15 companies vying for these homes, and then we'd have to, you know, cancel out somebody, keep somebody. And then this one came in front of us, and suddenly I seen four companies, and these are the four companies we're moving with, and I went through the contracts. Contracts were pretty much the same, so there was nothing drastic change there. But I just, and again, I'm not implying nothing, but I'm just trying to clarify. I don't get how we went from consistently 12, 15 companies vying for these homes, or investors, or whatever you want to call them, and suddenly, just four, and that's it. It just, I just found it odd. So, something changed.
That's all that submitted, the bids to the comptroller's office, those four names.
But again, I'm not implying anything. I'm just curious, with your expertise, like, do you know what? Like, why such a drastic drop?
Maybe in the middle of COVID. I can't answer that.
And if I may...
Corporate Counsel?
Thank you, Councilor Chair. We never had that many. I think we ended up having five or six for the 2018.
Oh, no more than that. I don't know if it was 12, 15, but we had quite a bunch.
Well, I could name them. It's the three that are here. Then we had, like, another company that was associated with a particular individual that I, that we all know. And then another individual, Mr. Mackey's company, that also did not put in a bid at this time.
Because he was asked not to put in.
Okay, well...
I'm not going to comment more than that.
And I won't either, because I can tell you, essentially, he didn't sign a contract last time.
Please, point of order.
All right. So, but the point is, is that we did not have that many. And now we have, I think, a grand total of, how many? 12 properties, maybe?
11.
Yeah. So, we don't have a lot of properties, and, you know, when they end up getting into this bid process, yes, if they get a property, like, a really good property, they can end up doing extremely well, but they also have to take the good and the bad together.
Yes.
And so, they can end up getting a real terrible property that they have to rehab, and that can end up being an issue. So, you know, you want to end up giving them enough, so you just don't have someone who gets one property, and then they get the dog of the properties, and someone else gets a great property.
Counselor, I can tell you as a Realtor, no, they're gonna do okay. They're gonna be okay, trust me.
Oh, I know, based on the idea...
Yeah, when you combine them all, they're gonna do okay.
Right.
Yeah, I can tell you.
Councilman Badun?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you so much for that. And just kind of piggyback off of Councilman Abdalhak on this. From what I do know, and I, you know, I fairly knew, I'm not familiar with the cap program. I didn't see it published anywhere. And I'm sure it was with respect to the administration. The gentleman from the Amity Foundation has reached out to me, and I believe some, I've been, almost all of the council here have said, you know, whenever that gets brought up, I want to be a part of that bid. And I said, hey, yeah, as soon as it comes up, I'll definitely let you know when you can apply for that bid. So, I just feel like, with respect to the organization who's been giving a hand to this community for many, many years, we should be able to table this, put this back, and allow the Amity Foundation to be a part of this. With respect to them and to this council.
Councilor Chair?
Councilman Muscat? I'm sorry, Councilman Conston, then you.
Number one, would, as far as I know, a house on a block that was a sole tax foreclosure, and we got first dibs on, may or may not be appropriate for a shelter house.
That's correct.
And number two, would that even be a permissible use for, I mean, the idea is that we sell these homes under certain restrictions. It's a, there's restrictions on the deed, the single-family doesn't move in, live there. If it's sold within so many years, it reverts back. But is that even a possibility? A realistic possibility?
It would be very questionable, all depending, I mean, if they have a bunch of people who are unrelated, then we end up potentially having a zoning issue with respect to the property as well. But, you know, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt that they might be able to do something with it as a single-family dwelling, but it's otherwise inconsistent with the whole RFP package.
They have...
So, I'll give you a quick, I'll give you a quick example. There's a student with the no names who plays sports at Crestwood High School, where he's a very good athlete. The family is renting a home, they can't afford to pay the 15, 16, and I'm sure Councilman Abdullah can tell you, you're renting a thousand square foot home today at 16, 17, 100, you know, $100 a month. And this family can't afford it. So, this kid is not allowed to play the sports. The Amity Foundation is willing to purchase this home and say, you know, I'm gonna let this family live in here. Instead of paying $1,600 a month, they're gonna pay $800 a month, something that they can afford, that's enough to pay off the taxes every year, and allowing the student to be able to go ahead and play sports, and potentially have a career in, you know, go on to college instead of not being, using his talents in the sport or the academics that they're allowed to. Some of these children that are in school are 16, 17 years old, they're not studying, they're helping their families so they can, you know, continue to help their family. And so, the Amity Foundation wants to be the resource to these families and say, we're gonna help these families out. And so, if that means I'm gonna buy one of these houses at a very good cost, I'm gonna allow somebody to go ahead and rent this at a very good cost as well. So, it's still being sold, the taxes are still being paid. It's more of a way of...
Well, I'm sorry, if I may, why would the taxes be paid by a nonprofit company?
Well, no, no, I'm saying, like, if the city still owes, well, the resident that's renting it, say he paid $800 a month. I'm just giving you a hypothetical out there. The $800 a month would be enough by the end of the year to be able to pay the taxes that the city, you know, taxed for that property.
Yeah, but we would probably not tax them, because they're a nonprofit entity.
I don't believe the nonprofit is gonna ask you to not tax the actual property.
Oh, I think they would. I mean, I'm sorry, I think they would expect that they would be treated like any other nonprofit, not end up having to pay taxes with respect to this. And then we have people who are essentially tenants in the property, which is inconsistent with the idea of them being single-family owner-occupied properties at that point. So, this is very, very, I mean, the council can choose what it wants to do, obviously, but this is a very different way of looking at this entirely. And maybe might be able to be, like I said, as an alternative, maybe there's a better way to end up doing it with another property or another, other properties that might be better suited for this, but these are all, at least right now, single-family properties.
Okay, let me ask you another question. Say the nonprofit purchased it and gifted it to this family in need, and then now this family in need is owning a single-family property, and now they're paying the taxes on it.
Right, and maybe they are, or maybe they turn around and they flip it, and there's no responsibility for them to do anything. They make a huge profit off of it, and essentially, our goal is lost, and they give it to someone who buys it, and then they turn it around and make it into a rental property. I mean, I'm not trying to be a downer, but...
I'm just speaking of the open. I don't know what the Amity Foundation wants to exactly do with these homes, but I think, with respect to them, we should give them the option to allow them to be able to bid on them.
We're not making any progress. We do have a motion on the table that we really should vote on before we go further with this.
Councilor Chair, just one question.
Okay, no, no, point of order. If we're gonna do questions, Councilman Conston's next.
Well, then we need to, then we need to do it.
Okay, go ahead.
And we need to continue, because I've got a major question.
Go ahead, Councilman Conston.
Is it legal with the cap program? Because I know the cap program has specific language in it to be single-family homes, okay? Now, I want to help people as much as anybody else, but we gotta do it the legal way. And if the cap program doesn't allow it to happen that way, then we have to find another block of homes later to be able to do that. That's simple.
If I may, Councilor Chair.
That's the question to you, sir.
Corporate Counsel?
It is not currently authorized under this.
So, there we go. It's not legal.
We're discussing something that's not legal anyways.
Here's the problem, it's not legal under the cap program.
Councilman Abdalhak? I would like to table it until I see this opinion and writing, please.
I agree.
Well, we have a motion on the table, first of all, and we have to vote on that motion, and then we can come back and agree to table it.
But I want to clarify something about the illegal, Counselor, just to be clear. And this has no reflection on Amity specifically, but to the best of my knowledge, please clarify for me, this is our program, it's at our discretion, because you said this is not, this is outside the norm, and it may be outside the norm, but it is at our discretion what we do with these homes. The cap program is not a state-mandated program, as far as I know, and let's clarify for me if I'm wrong. To the best of my knowledge, this is a program where we buy properties back, and it is at our discretion what we do with them. back, and it is at our discretion what we do with them. And I recall specifically on the council table, when we started putting in the parameters, as far as whoever buys them, you know, it can't be a rental, they can't flip it, they can't sell it land contract, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And these were all our parameters, thus making it our program and our discretion what we do with them versus quote-unquote illegal.
What I said was, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
What I said is it's not authorized. If you wanted to change all the parameters of the program.
We can.
By the city.
We can.
You can change those, but it would be inconsistent with what you've done right now.
But inconsistent just means it's not the same as what we typically have done, but doesn't mean it's illegal.
It means that you can't do it the way you would want to do it right now without changing everything about these contracts.
We can't do it based on the conditions we put on the CAP program contracts in the past.
Right now.
But what contract we put in now, or RFP, can be changed at our discretion.
Well, right now, the contracts that we have here, it would not be able to be done.
What we put out for RFP. But it is at our discretion, even if we get four RFPs back, it is at our discretion. And I'm just clarifying for our council members, depends on the direction they want to go. But even if we get four, request for proposals, to clarify. So, if we get, in this case, four bids, which I'm still not comfortable with why we only got four bids, but we'll move off of that. Being that we got four bids, it is still at our discretion as a council body to say, no, we're not gonna go with that. We're gonna go, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna change it to X, or we're gonna go with Z, or whatever. It is at our discretion at the end of the day.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay, I have Councilman Abdallah.
I would recommend we vote on it.
Okay, Councilman Muscat, you are next. No, we're not gonna keep going back and forth. We've went too many times.
I already done, I already said what I needed to say.
Okay, at this time, are we prepared to vote on this?
Well, I just want to point out, these are, the county offers us first dibs at these tax foreclosure properties, but within certain restrictions. And there's, you know, a lot of controversy, a lot of the, one, realty transitions is, is under indictment. The mayor of Taylor's under indictment. The rules. I don't know how open the bidding process was. I am somewhat familiar with Amity Foundation and their Good Group. I just don't know that this particular program, these particular houses would be suited. And at this late in the game, if it's possible to change it and open it up. That's it. That's it.
Okay, at this time.
Council Chair.
No, sorry. Councilman, at this time.
Every day spoke several times.
Councilman, this is the council table's discussion. And if we need to ask somebody a specific question outside council chamber table, then we address them at that time. That's the Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, at this time, this is the Corporation Counsel Miyaki, selection of CAP program, a selection of CAP developers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Constance?
Yes.
Councilman Badun?
No.
Malinowski is yes. Councilman Abdallah?
No.
Councilman Abdallah?
No.
Councilman Wensel?
No.
Okay, it fails. Next item on the agenda is Library Director McCaffrey, disposal of items.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdallah?
So, this is, I got them all over. Getting a little messy here. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the request to donate or dispose of four foam green panels, eight study area chairs, two steel bookshelf cabinets, 20 steel CD shelves, and two large flyer racks. These items will, will either be recycled or donated to local charities. It's outlined in item 9E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun. Is there any discussion?
Just thank you for donating them to local charities.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Now, under ordinances and resolutions, we have Mayor Bazey, resolution of the Senior Alliance 2022 Annual Implementation Program for Aging Services.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve and adopt the City of Dearborn Heights Resolution affirming approval of the Senior Alliance 2022 Annual Implementation Plan for Aging Services as outlined in 11A.
Support by Councilman Abdallah. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, we will open it up to comments from council members.
Council Chair.
I ask that you limit it to three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. First of all, my voting no on 9D was not anything to do with the proposal of having a nonprofit, or it was something completely different, a legal issue I know about. I want to thank the mayor for appointing me on the 100th anniversary party for the golf course. Very honored to be part of that. It's gonna be really exciting. Director Jamal and Ali Deeb are doing a fantastic job. I've been working with those guys the last couple of weeks and months. Man, we scored big time with those guys. Our new DPW director seems to be doing a fantastic job also. Congratulations. And I had a, I was asked to ask this question. I don't know who to ask it to, but during COVID, we had all the meetings online through Zoom, at which point the, during which the council chambers were being remodeled. Can you, what was actually remodeled or changed in the council chambers?
Is that for me? What was remodeled? Nothing yet.
I was asked to ask that question.
So, the last council meeting, we had approval of a contract for a design build to facelift. This is not going into the structure. This is a facelift. Basically, code compliant issues, you know, ADA compliance, the chairs, the separation. And the most important part is the technology part. As you can see, we still have VHS equipment up on, on the walls that can't be used. And then also cameras, sessions, fixed-end cameras. And all the technology package was, as we discussed in the last council meeting, will be portable in a way that it can be moved with us if we have to remove the equipment to a different location. So, it's a facelift for this chamber, code compliant issues, and technology equipment.
All right, thank you. Like I said, I was asked to ask the question. While you're up there, I have one, one more question. On the south end of Dearborn Heights, we have the Ecorse Creek, and on the north end, the Rouge River.
Yes.
Do all storm waters drain into those bodies of water respectively, respectfully? I mean, on the south end, do all storm waters drain into the creek? And do all storm waters on the north end drain into the Rouge River?
Yes, so majority, 90-plus percent, yes.
Where else would it go?
We have some combined between the two, but we have a lot of infiltration that's actually going into sanitary as opposed to storm. But the majority, just like you indicated, the two locations, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Okay, Councilman Abdallah?
So, this is for, this is for Director Ali Deeb, or maybe Administration. With the last, you know, flooding and what have you, and this is specifically in regards to Ecorse Creek, every time I look at that, I just, it just, oh my God, I can't, I can't tell you guys how much it bothers me. And try to imagine having to live right by that, and all that water in the street flowing up inside people's living rooms. Now, we all get upset when it happens to our basements, which is, you know, a little bit less problematic versus obviously the first floor. But when it goes into the, it's okay. When it goes into the first floor, you know, from the creek, that's seriously problematic for a lot of people. And I know we've talked about grants. We've talked about the state. We've talked about the federal. We've talked about, you know, Washington DC, and George Washington, and Lincoln, and Kennedy, and everybody's gonna help us out. But at the end of the day.
Nobody is.
Nobody's helped the residents out for, at least that I know of, 10, 12, 15 years on plus. You know how they talk about dredging the Ecorse Creek? Call me crazy, but I'm just familiar with the situation in a family, all hands on deck. So, if something happened to one of my brothers, my sister, I could sit there and say, well, you know, wait until you get somebody from somebody, or I'd say, hey, I gotta do what I gotta do and help out my family. Being all of us are Dearborn Heights family, I just think, I think it's the right thing to do personally. If we were to put out either now, or maybe next year, or we borrow it, or whatever, $2 million from our budget from wherever, and at least start something, this is not gonna solve everything forever, but start solve something to start to solve this problem for the residents. Now, am I talking about putting a huge retaining bond? We've seen the Army Corps of Engineers have talked about 250 million, or I think it was 180 million. I've seen another estimate, 340 million. Needless to say, we don't have that money. But even if we did the basic squeegee, you know, clean up as much as we can with whatever equipment we could bring in, and it could cost us a million, it could cost us $2 million, we could put out a bond, we could make it over 10 years, five years, I don't know. But I can tell you, I as a resident am willing to pay additional taxes, as I hope and pray a lot of other residents are willing to pay additional taxes, or maybe we take it from within our budget. But we cut out something from our budget. Can that type of number help at least minimize that problem?
So, part of the lessons learned from the last, well, I'm gonna say, three floods that we had so far.
Hundred-year floods.
Yes, 500. But in any case, yes. So, so part of the lessons learned is that we are currently looking at our system in total. And then, as the councilman indicated, that we have the two separate drainage systems, if you will, the south and the north end. We're looking at exactly what you said. So, we are looking at going out for RFQ to, to look at the drainage area in total, and then the capacity, and what short-term things that we can do. Councilman Abdallah shared with me a copy of the Corps of Engineers' report over the last weekend, I believe. And I actually read the whole thing.
You're an engineer, I expect.
It was amazing. But, but it's, you have to keep it, and first, the data is a little old, so it needs to be updated. And I can tell you, just by, if you put this out to bid today, the numbers are, have probably doubled. So, it's outdated because of construction cost, current construction cost, and the things that we needed to, the capacity and the coverage area will have to be enlarged. So, instead of starting from scratch, we're going to take this as a starting point. There were some good recommendations. There were, I believe, options, and there are six options. But we can start, make that a starting point, and then see on our scale, on our side, what we can do to mitigate such events in the future. So, I'll be coming back to you for, with possible options relatively soon.
But see, that's my point, Ali. That's exactly my point. See, I obviously want to continue going after state level and federal level, no doubt about it. So, for our Congresswomen that are working on this.
Absolutely.
God bless you. Continue to do this. Okay, great. But what I'm talking about, just at least at this particular point, let's just fix the flat tire before we change the tire.
Right.
We'll continue working on the big stuff for later. But even something as simple, again, I'm an engineer. This is your world. But just something to clean, start cleaning it.
Yes.
Thank you.
We will be. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, you gotta remember that the creek is county. So, we are talking to the county and also the state. So, just had a meeting today regarding that particular topic.
But even the judge's judgment. Let's go back to the county and say, let's go.
No, we are, we are, we are meeting. They are very helpful. And we had a meeting, two meetings today with the county. And I talked to somebody from the governor's office today as well. So, we are, we are pushing for something.
Yes.
So. What I'm looking for is boots on, I'm gonna give you a military term, boots on the ground.
Oh, yeah, I know what that means.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we are working on it, trust me. And we are, we're going full speed, you know, holding everybody, you know, everybody's willing to help, especially now with three floods. They are, we are working together. We are meeting with everybody on deck.
Thank you.
Participating.
Councilman, I've got.
Go ahead.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes. Number one, again, on the item that we, we voted, I voted yes on about the housing. It's got nothing to do against battered women. Believe me, I want to find a place. But what I'm concerned about is the way the CAP program was set up. And I voted to keep the, keep whatever we had set up, and then maybe down in the future for the next set of houses, we can change the rules. But I will go with the city council and see about changing the rules for this one. And I agree with you guys on that case. So, I just want to make that clear, number one. Number two, I wanna, I said it earlier in the day, there's people that are ramping and raving about sewers never, ever been cleaned. They've lived here for 30, 40 years, never saw sewers being cleaned. I can assure you, the city is getting the sewers clean. This, this is a five-year project, folks. It doesn't take five days to go through the whole city. It takes years to go through an entire city this size. And I was one of the council people, along with, in the beginning, it was myself, about our sewers not being cleaned properly by a former company. And then, we had Councilman Bazey at the time, and Councilwoman Malinowski Maxwell join the fight in with me on getting a different company to see about getting our sewers cleaned properly. I believe they are now. And people have asked to see a, a schedule. Hopefully, we can, I can get a hand on a schedule of when and where the next round of cleaning will be, so people can drive by, see the truck out there. And so, that'll be one of the things I'll be asking our DPW department for. My next one is, the ordinance department needs help, folks. I spent another round with the director. I'm sure he doesn't like to see me coming to there and kind of giving him a piece of my mind. But I'm, but I'm gonna tell him the way, the same thing I told GFL. I'm at the bottom of the food chain, pal, and I'm, I'm getting beat up here about all of this mess. And I'd like to ask Corporation Counsel Miyaki, what's the holdup on bringing these people into court, issuing tickets? I hear stories, it's, their hands are tied legally and all of this. Let's get the job done, Mr. Miyaki, whatever it takes. I know we have a new attorney that may not be up to speed, but get her up to speed. This is what we pay her for. Okay? So, that's another thing that I, I'm saying. And then, I have another issue with Mr. Shank, our attorney. Well, when does council people have a time limit?
I was told by Council Chair.
We are having a time limit tonight because we're going so late.
Uh, no, that's not according to any rules that we passed as a council. And I'm sorry, I've got things that citizens are requesting. And my job is to represent the citizens.
Amen.
Go ahead, Councilman.
People are asking me about our attorney, Mr. Shank, and they're getting a final billing for him. I think we have the, the things that we need to get our finances straight, and we need to get a bill from Mr. Shank. And then, the COVID is back on the rise in Dearborn Heights. We're second in the, in, in the area here. We also had a death. And right now, we're in this meeting, and we are not adhering to our own resolution that we shouldn't meet until August 31st. And now, the, the building here is going, this room's going to be tore apart. So, we should make provisions immediately about getting some other place or Zoom meetings. And one last thing, there was requested by city council people about meetings to be held. And for some reason that I've never heard of before, that you needed a letter from, with respect to you, Council Chair, that we needed a letter signed by us to request a special meeting. We request a special meeting. I believe the council chair gets paid extra to set up these meetings. This is what the extra pays for. We request something from you, and you should do it. And I've been trying to get ahold of Mr., or trying to figure out why we're not having a meeting pertaining to Mr. Miyaki's opinion letter that we wanted to make public. And I'd like to have that meeting and find out why we can't get it public. I don't know if that's gonna be in a closed-session meeting or not, but.
Councilman?
We need to have it. So, if I could ask.
The clerk is going by the charter in regards to the request. Is that correct?
It does say written request.
It does.
By the charter, it's gotta be a written request.
Right.
That is according to the charter.
And when it was sent by email by a councilman.
By email.
He sent the email, and why was it not approved?
That was one email. It needs to be three emails.
It was signed by three people.
It wasn't signed by anybody. It was requested by you.
By three people, yes.
But we were, but our names were put on it.
There was no physical signature, is what she's trying to say.
It's never been requested by.
So, then we can put our physical signatures on an email, and could it be done electronically?
I don't know about that, Corporation.
Our charter's so old, it doesn't allow for that.
They don't know about electronic requests.
We've had meetings in the past.
I know that. And we've always had, we have always had a written request.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so, if I can ask the Corporation Counsel Miyaki about.
I don't know about electronic.
Having a special meeting on this letter that we wanted to.
If I may, the mayor, Council Chair, if I may, the mayor requested that I make it into a form where there would not be a problem in terms of attorney-client privilege. I will do so. I will issue it then. I will do so in the next two days. And then, determination can be made by the decision-makers whether or not they feel the need to end up having a special meeting or study session with regard to what I state in, in that letter, which will be very similar to what I stated in the one which was attorney-client privileged.
I'd appreciate that, sir.
Okay.
And, you know, I tell, urge people, if you've got trash out in front of your house from the flood, please call us. We can't go street to street. We can't go street to street, at least I can't drive the entire street and write it down. I've done that today, I spent a couple hours doing that. I reported houses. And if you have trash out in front of your house from the flood, please call the city so they can get you on the list to pick it up. Thank you.
Okay, Corporate Counsel, I'd like to point you to Section 5.13 for your functions and duties. It says you shall act as legal advisor to the mayor and the council members in matters relating to their official duties, and shall give legal opinions concerning affairs of the city to the council and the mayor. Which opinions shall be in writing and a copy thereof shall be filed with the city clerk. It says nothing in regards to meetings. That's not part of your job, according to this.
Wait, my, my job is, I'm, I'm not sure what, what you're saying, Council Chair. Are you saying I'm not supposed to show up at meetings?
Oh, no, no, no. It said, your legal opinions shall be in writing and a copy thereof shall be filed with the city clerk. It says nothing about having a meeting for your legal opinions. We've always filed them with the clerk. And I would like an opinion letter from you, why you feel it's necessary to go beyond those parameters that you followed for the last, how many years you've been on council? I mean, on Corporation Council.
I've attended many sessions, open meetings, closed meetings, based on the direction of the council, the council chair, the mayor, over the years. I'm kind of perplexed, maybe we need to speak about this.
Yeah, we can talk about tomorrow if you want.
Yes, I guess, I don't understand what, exactly what, what your point is, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks. Oh, I have Councilman Baydum, go ahead, please.
You know what, I'll give some of my time to the honorable counsel.
I just want to clarify, I just want to, while commuting, are you trying to basically, I just want to make sure if that's what you're trying to say, that as a counselor, he can't call a meeting to order? Is that correct, what you're trying to say?
No, no, no. His opinion, opinions shall be in writing and a copy thereof just, will shall be filed with the city clerk. It doesn't require a meeting for the opinions that he's given.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's right here.
Okay, we have Councilman Baydum, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I'll be very, very brief. I know it's, we're coming around to about 9:30 here. I just like to give kudos during this time. So thank you to our, to my colleagues for being here, thank you to the administration. Thank you to our police and fire chief. I know my mother just received a ticket for not having her seatbelt on. She, you know, I, I got the phone call in Arabic, it wasn't pleasant. And I said, were you wearing your seatbelt? And she said, I'm, I'm telling you, I got a ticket. And I said, great, did, did you, were you wearing your seatbelt? She said, no. I said, then you're getting the ticket. I'm not gonna call and say, why'd you give my mom a ticket? So thank you to the police department for doing that. My mom should have been wearing her seatbelt. I also just, I know, you know, I came in, you know, I, I came in here very, very upset about the flood. This is the third time I know our HR director, it's her third time where our basement has flooded. I'm very emotional about it. I'm sorry if I came off a little bit, you know, aggressive on GFL. My next-door neighbor has the same last name as Councilman Abdullah. His name is Ali Abdullah, AKA Bulldog. His garbage hasn't been picked up in two weeks. I, I believe I've reached out to our lead for the last two weeks. And they call him Bulldog for a reason, and he's not being very nice to me. And so I was, you know, I'm sorry if I came off a little aggressive or a little emotional, but it's not just my neighbor, it's, you know, the majority of the residents where the trash hasn't picked up. So kudos to the administration for putting that on. I'm so happy that you guys did that. I had no idea, when I seen it on Sunday, as I went through the packet, honest to God, it was the biggest smile on my face. Because when I get these phone calls and somebody says, what are you guys doing? I can say, we're now putting something forward, you know, at least scare GFL. And with that, thank you to our council chair, you're doing a great job with these meetings, even though Councilman Muscat isn't so happy about the three minutes. And as far as the last thing.
It never happened before.
Well, no, we have, in the past, and so.
My three minutes are almost up, so thank you. The last thing I have is just regarding to the Amity Foundation. It is a nonprofit that's very giving to this community. As the Councilman Abdullah and I were talking, I believe, Monday, he called me Monday, called me back on Tuesday regarding this, and he said, you know, just, just stay on high alert, be okay, probably gonna receive a lot of phone calls. Luckily, I didn't, but I, I also want it to be fair. I believe that they will bring really, really good things to this community. And it's not just about battling women, it's, it's more of just that. They offer, you know, a lot of things, and I really hope that, you know, come, you know, if the bid is republished, we'll accept them and allow them. Thank you so much, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you to the police department for the ticket for my mother. God bless.
Thank you. I have Councilman Abdul Haq next.
Is Mr. Miyaki raising his hand?
Yes, I did, Mr. Our Counsel.
Oh, I, did you want to be put on the list?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Abdul Haq.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to address our residents. Lots of calls comes to us as city councilor, as officials or employees. I need them to know that we will do anything possible in our capability, in our power, to respond to their requests. But we have very limited power to do things for them. What we do normally, we take their request, we pass it to the proper department, whether the police, or the fire, or the public work. And we follow up on it always as we all do. And sometimes they are not satisfied with the response, but they need to know, this is how much we can do, and this is, you know, what's in our hand. So I hope they understand that's what we do as council people, and that's the only thing allowed for us. And I want to thank the chief of police very, very much for your email. It was very educational and very informative. And you put us on the right track, actually.
I could write a ticket too for you.
Thank you. Actually, you did write a ticket for my brother because he left his car. No, he got stuck in the water, and the next day, they gave him a ticket for abandoned car. But I think he paid it. And I want to thank Director Ali Deeb very, very much for what you did for the sinkholes. My backyard was dug, and my neighbor was, you know, dug 15 feet down by probably 15 feet wide. And DNL, I think the company, they done marvelous job. I think they are a keeper, they were very polite, very professional, and they done the job, you know, with the least amount of damage to the flowers and damage to the property. Now, I would like to ask Mr. Jamal, are we in compliance with what was suggested in 9C or 9D? Was there any compliance issue?
The answer is no. What the Corporation Council tried to do is to help clarify some of the practices that we are doing okay. I, I was gonna publicly support what he's putting because it doesn't limit anything or doesn't add anything except clarification, you know, for, for more explanation. Right now, we do have the capability under the charter for the mayor to sign and to pay any payment up to what's the balance of each general ledger account being approved by you.
Okay, Corporate Counsel Miyaki's shaking his head, no.
So, so I finish, then Corporate Miyaki will, will talk after I'm done. Thank you.
We're gonna do this in a study session, right?
So I'm, I'm answering Mr. Abdul Haq, you know, Councilman Abdul Haq. So please, it's, it's a floor for me. Please, you know, under the, the rubber tools, you don't interrupt me when I'm talking. So the question, Councilman Abdul Haq, yes, we are. So the mayor is not restricted from approving anything between the two council meetings up to each balance in the general ledger.
Thank you.
There's number two, number two, that the $1,500 threshold that we are using now, it is not in the charter, and it's not acceptable, and we are not gonna continue to do that. I already advised my opinion that we will bring to the city council every penny the city spent for public's currency. Okay, the council can choose which way it should be, or you like to be exposed to the public for transparency. It can be under total, it can be under receive, note, and file, it can be as, whatever. The, the key here is not how to expose the expenditures to the public, it's public money, is whether yes or no. The question, the answer is, we have to. You are under your oath, the overseeing of the public money. And you trusted to do that. Now, we put it for you. It's up to you. You wanna look at it, you don't wanna look at it, the public is opposed, that's what, that's the bottom line.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
My last question is to the mayor. Do we have any preliminary audit report from the forensic audit which is done?
There, there is some stuff that I've seen. We have to get the full report before we present it to the, I mean, to everybody, the administration, council, and the residents.
Is there anything you can share with us in a closed session, or?
No, no, we can do it in an open session. I mean, we voted on it in open session, so we can bring it to all the residents.
I like really to know, so far, we spent some good amount of money, and I believe my colleagues shared this with me, that we'd like to know what, what we found. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the council table? Councilman Coniston?
Thank you. Good job, again, to the administration and all our city services regarding the response to the flooding, keeping the residents informed, and getting extra help, getting the trash picked up. There was some discussion about, you know, the, the solution to the flooding, and there's, there's, you know, probably minds differ on what the solution is. I do know that city filed the Chapter 8 petition when Kurt Heisey was the county drain commissioner. A study was done at a, at a great expense, and the building of the retention basin, amongst other things, was, was thought by minds, higher than, than mine anyway, as a, as a good solution, especially for the Ecorse Creek flooding. But I guess the debate is still open. These last couple rains were, hit everybody bad, especially the north end of Dearborn Heights, and especially, I know, Dearborn. The newly-appointed mayor, Mayor Bazey, had talked about forming an ethics commission. And I think that's, you know, talking about the ceiling on what the, the mayor can write expenses for, and that type of thing. I think that's something that needs to be looked at and looked into, and I'd, I'd be willing to help work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the council table? Before we go to public announcements from the community?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll be quick, I promise. Just to let everybody know, there was questions earlier about the revenue for the golf course. I have talked to Eric about that already, and he is working on something. I guess in his contract, there's a clause saying that he doesn't have to give you all of the expenses and things like that, but he is working on a revenue. So you have some idea what the golf course is bringing in. However, with all of the rain, he's had to close down a lot in regards to the leagues and stuff. And then there's been COVID this year, so obviously, this year has, has been hit hard. So tomorrow, we have our big first concert in the park, 50 amp fuse. Yes, it's so exciting. And the band is playing from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. We have kids' activities, games. My staff is going to run, starting at 5:30. At 6:30, we're going to be having the fire department come, and they are gonna do some interactive things with the kids. They're gonna have coloring books, crayons, and also squirt the kids because I hear it's gonna be pretty warm. So that'll be fun for the kids. We will also have a face painter, a magician, and a balloon artist. The face painter and the balloon artist will be strolling around the audience while the parents are listening to the music. And then we have food trucks, so we'll have lots of food there for purchase as well. So we started setting that up today, so that's exciting. Friday, August 6th, I'll mention this one, we have the lighted drone show. And we have the Beatles tribute band, Toppermost. And that starts at 6:30 and goes until approximately 10:00. And then we have the drone show starting at about 9:40. And we are the only community, community that's had the drone show out of Detroit, so it's gonna be exciting and a lot of fun to watch. So we do have flyers in the hall. Garage sale coming up on August 14th, so we are definitely looking for more vendors for that from 9:00 to 4:00. And another concert in the park on August 26th.
Good job.
So I'm like freezing, I don't know about you guys. Good evening.
Madam Chair, the, the Corporation Council have been raising the line behind them.
Oh, no, he has to say madam chair, because I don't.
He did, you said, you mentioned.
I didn't hear him.
I was just waiting, because you're on the list. I thought you wrote me down or something, but, I'm sorry.
Did you want?
The clerk could go, certainly.
I'll make it real quick, okay. Just a reminder that there is a local primary election a week from today. August 3rd, polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The clerk's office will be open this Saturday from 8:00 to 4:00 for election business only. And we will be the only one that'll be open, the rest of the city hall will not be open. If anyone wants any information, you can go to the League of Women Voters at, gosh, it just, I had it in my head.
Is it vote4 or something?
Vote411.org, thank you. Or Michigan.gov/vote, I was trying to remember. Or you can go to our city website, because there's a sample ballot located on there as well. Or you can give us a call, 8:00 to 5:00.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Corporate Counsel.
Yes, I'm sorry, just a couple of things. One of them is, I disagree with Mr. Jamal, but we'll talk about that at the, at the study session. With respect to the study session, I would request that you also put on the CAP program because right now, I'm not certain. Councilman Wenzel ended up saying that he had a different reason for voting no. I think we need to have more discussion so the administration knows what the direction is that we're supposed to be taking, because it sounded like three of you were in favor of this particular nonprofit. Three of you wanted to go ahead with the way we had it. And Councilman Wenzel, I'm not sure exactly what his thinking was. The other thing I would note, however, before we end up doing that, is, you know, part of the reason we go through the RFP process, and I know this was done on BidNet and so on and so forth, is so that we don't have any sort of allegations of favoritism. And this is not meant to be disrespectful to any of you, but we are talking about one specific nonprofit that three of you had spoken to. And what about all of the other potential nonprofits out there that did not have the same opportunity? We might need to revisit this whole process if we're looking at it in that way. And I would, I would respectfully request that the study session cover this item as well so that we can flesh out those issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Mayor?
Yeah, so also, I want to clarify, so Mr. Miyaki did submit the letter that you guys are asking about, and that's what we've been talking about. And I followed every protocol that Council Chair asked for for us first, a closed-session meeting, not to embarrass anybody. But that was denied. I was told to submit the, an email. I did that. They said, no, you gotta submit a letter. I typed a letter, I submitted that, and that was a no. So we did follow all the protocols. And again, I just wanted to make sure that the council members are aware. I just, I want to make sure that we did, I mean, it is per charter, I followed the charter. Mr. Miyaki filed the charter, we did request for meetings several times, and it was denied, even though it's for the charter that the mayor can request a special meeting or a closed session, and both of them were not followed. And again, I'm not gonna talk about what's in the letter because it's still attorney-client privilege, so he removed that portion of it. So I guess I'll move away from that for now, till it's not attorney-client privilege. I want to update the residents. First, I want to thank our emergency manager, League of Women Voters.
First, I want to thank our emergency manager, Lee Gavin, for his outstanding work. He's been working, like I said, over the weekends, you know, with FEMA.
Lee, my man, Lee.
So just to let you know, the FEMA did decide to make Dearborn Heights one of the flood disaster recovery center. We do have one at the Eaton Center, so it's one of very few communities that was chosen to do the flood disaster recovery center. We have the SBA there. So what I want to do is, I want to reiterate that all residents that had floods from the first flood right now in June, that they still need to call FEMA. So just because you turned in a flood survey sheet to the city of Dearborn Heights, you still have to do a claim with FEMA. So please call one eight hundred six two one three three six two. And you can see that number, you can call the city hall, we'll give you the number if you don't have it. It's also on our city website. The FEMA, the DRC is, is open seven days a week, seven to seven. So we do have several centers in case Dearborn Heights residents work in different cities. So there's one in Garden City and one in Dearborn. The Garden City is on a Maplewood Community Center. And the one in Dearborn is a Centennial Library. And obviously Dearborn Heights is at the Eaton. So make sure you go in there, you do the registration. After you file, make sure you keep the number because you are going to get a call or maybe a visit from FEMA. So they're going to come in and they're going to ask you for the registration. And one of the things that I know Mr. Gavin and I, we did discuss with FEMA extensively on Sunday, that they do have interpreters over there. So if you don't speak, I mean, any language, they can actually pretty much cover any language within a city. So if you get there, they don't like to have minors translate. And the reason why is because, I mean, we experienced that today. One of the, the kids actually translated wrong to the FEMA and their claim was denied. So that's why they wanted the actual interpreters that they have set up through this hotline that does the translation. So for all the residents, make sure you file directly with them. And in case, okay, so the, the person will come in, the adjuster, they will ask you for photo I D. and they'll ask you also, they want to see the ownership and if you're, if you're occupied, if you're renter or you actually are the homeowner, resident occupant. So make sure if they do deny you, don't throw that letter away. There's a process that you have to appeal. So I've seen some, a few denials from the flood. So make sure you go and you look at the process, how to appeal. And they do actually encourage you at FEMA to appeal it. And they do have the DRC center to make sure you go in there, ask for assistance and they'll have, help you through the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public announcements?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I want to do a friendly reminder that the summer 2021 taxes were mailed on July first and you should have already received your tax bill in the mail. However, if you have not received your tax bill, please call the treasurer's office at three one three seven nine one three four one zero. We'll make sure you get a replacement bill. Want to remind you that the tax bills are due by August sixteenth, that's Monday, August sixteenth, five P M. in our office to avoid the late fees. There are several payment options available to our residents, including the online payment option. You can drop in person here at city hall. We are open Monday through Thursday, eight A M. to noon and one to five P M. So city hall is closed from twelve to one for cleaning. You can use a drop box. We have a drop box out by the parking lot as well as the night drop on the wall near the entrance. You can also drop payments off at Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. We have two locations, they have to be Dearborn Heights locations. The first one is two seven one one five West Warren, which is one block east of Inkster Road. The second location is four one 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 South Telegraph. So that's near, and I still call it the old McDonald's, old style McDonald's. But it's right next door to that McDonald's on South Telegraph. In addition, you can always mail your payments back with United States Postal Service mail. However, we do advise that you do that as soon as possible in case there's delays with mail service, which we cannot control. And again, I just want to thank everybody. And one last note, I'll make sure I do this. Please do not drop cash in our drop boxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Drop it nice.
Good evening. I just wanted to announce that the rescheduled job fair is going to be Saturday, August seventh, from ten A M. to noon at the Carolyn Kennedy Library. So this was rescheduled due to flood number one, but it will be held on Saturday, August seventh, ten A M. to twelve noon at the Carolyn Kennedy Library. Thank you, and I'll see you at the library.
Thank you.
Wait, Director? Just, I mean, since it's a public forum, might be best, maybe if you don't mind, if you say with that job fair, because I know it's for city, city-type employment.
Exactly what we had scheduled for the twenty-sixth, so it's a city employment. So in particular, we have a great need for Department of Public Works, police, fire, and then we are looking for part-time. We have full-time in recreation as well, and we have a full-time library position. So there's quite a few. And we are doing part-time election workers, yep, so.
Okay, thank you.
Not for the primary, but for the general, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for ordinance?
Madam Chair, we have a speaker here.
Sorry, I know I'm on the hidden side. Good, good evening. I just wanted to bring to the attention of the council members that we had attempted to bring the credit card issues back to the table on multiple occasions. The treasurer has requested two study sessions for the credit cards. It was denied. It was on the agenda for tonight, it was denied. So at this point, I want to yield my time to our compliance director to explain why this is so important to discuss and have the city vote on it, as well as corporate counsel Miyaki, as to how we can bring that back, back to the table and have the council actually discuss these issues and ask any questions they may have.
Yeah.
Okay. Again, good evening. From the compliance point of view, the transition from petty cash and, and some bucks to electronic petty cash using the credit card system is actually the common standard practice of municipalities. Now, the limit is up to you. It can be five hundred, three hundred, two thousand. We are attempting to put together an internal control system for the city. Right now, we don't have a comprehensive internal control. And that's one of the requirements we promised the state treasury department to do. And we are under, almost done. You know, that policy is a book and the chapters are certain processes like how we handle cash, how we, how we handle the accounting for the, for the cash. So this is a part of an internal, comprehensive internal control policy that we are required to address, develop and implement and report back to the city, the state treasury department. I encourage you to, to talk about it, discuss it, come up with whatever you like to do. You are the registrators. We put an issue for you. Please advise us. You make the policy, we operate and we follow your policies. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman?
So, so in all fairness, Director, I just want to make sure, putting it or not putting it on the agenda was not obviously my doing. But just to be fair, you said it should be discussed. It was discussed and it was voted on and to the best of my recollection, it was voted down seven zero. So to be fair to the council chair, it was discussed.
I didn't address this issue, I didn't say anything about the council chair.
I'm not stating it that way. What I'm stating is you were, it was said that it was not put on the agenda.
I didn't say it wasn't put on the agenda.
I'm talking about the chief of staff. But I do understand, we understand per the charter, it's at her discretion. But I'm just saying, in defense, just to be fair, it was discussed and it was turned down seven zero. So it was brought to the agenda previously. Now, why she did or didn't put it, I can't comment on it. But I'm just saying publicly that it was voted on, seven zero.
Oh, oh, I understand. I'm encouraging you to continue, to continue to discuss this at your pleasure, but we need, we need a direction, how to deal with the, with the boxes right now that from the compliance point of view and from the internal control point of view, I am having some issues in processing that in compliance with the charter with the treasury department. And I'm just bringing this from the compliance, financial compliance point of view. I encourage you, I didn't say you didn't, you do whatever at your, at your pleasure, whenever you need that, you, whenever, I'm encouraging you that I need that to be included in the internal control comprehensive policy that I, with the financial team, the executive, the mayor executive financial team, we have to report back to the state. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Abda Hawk?
Sorry, if I may, I just wanted to say the situation changed when you approved one of our directors to have a credit card and part of the agenda items was a policy about how she has to use that credit card that wasn't in the agenda items for today. That's why I'm asking to bring it back.
Right.
And the control.
Okay, point of order, please.
Council Chair.
We have Councilman Abda Hawk and then I'll have you next.
It's okay, I like to hear from them before I say.
The only thing I was going to say is a slight correction to what the council chair pro tem said. It's not in the discretion necessarily of the council chair to set the agenda. The council chair sets the agenda, the council approves the agenda. If the council wants to add to the agenda, the council has the authority to end up doing so. The council chair is there to facilitate the meeting. And if you, as a body, wish something to be discussed based on a request from council members or from the administration, you as a body can make that decision regardless of the council chair's decision. Thank you.
Okay, I did reach out to a few council members and they felt it was not necessary to bring it back on since it had already been discussed and turned down unless something drastic had changed and we should have went to a study session to, to have it presented to us what it makes it different the second time you bring it back to us. Because it, you see our meetings go a long time. So that could have been another half an hour discussion of we already voted on this, why do we have this back in front of us?
Council Chair, then that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act if you discussed that with a few council members and not all of us. I mean.
I'm sorry, there was no quorum present.
Yeah, but it wasn't discussed with me and I have a different opinion. I may have a different opinion on it. So I'm not, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
Either or, but if you're going to say that you contacted a few council people, then you should have contacted all of us, not just a few.
Well, I didn't want to be in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Well, you do it one at a time, like you did. So I, I mean, but just taking two people or three people.
Councilman, I know you've, I know you've done the same exact thing.
Correct.
And not contacted me. So at this time, let's not air.
But I don't, I'm not setting the agenda. You are.
Madam Chair, just to put an end to this issue, if you have a new criteria, new debt, a new reason, valid reason to bring it back, please do in the future. But we voted seven to zero.
We voted a study session.
But as a courtesy, probably.
It's not correct. Point of order, I'm sorry. It's just not correct. What you're saying is not correct. It was a five to two vote.
Five to two.
No, it was seven to zero. No, I have the motion right here.
Whatever was the, the vote, you know, sorry for giving the wrong number. But let me say, if there is something in you which could convince us, you know, to change our mind, please bring it in the future and let's put it to us.
Excuse me, there's a lot of new things, but I don't want to necessarily burden you with all of them now. I mean, if, as long as you say, hey, you know, we can talk about this at some point.
Send them by email to all of us.
I've done a lot of work on it.
Send them by email.
That's fine, too.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, at this time, is there any other public comment? Go ahead, please.
Mine's more of an announcement. It's going to be short because it's cold, the seats are hot and I'm missing the Olympics. Okay. The, the thing I wanted to talk about is we did have our South Dearborn Heights Civic Association last Thursday. And thanks to our great fire department, we had our fire marshal there, we had our fire inspector there and we had a dog named Blue Bell. Blue Bell. And Blue Bell stole the show. But we, we did have them demonstrate how to put out a fire the proper way and it was so well attended that it was hard to get the people out of line to do the fire stuff so that Lisa could do her talk on taxes. But it was a great success and our meetings are always the fourth Thursday of the month, seven to nine, at three three, three five, South Beach Daily in Dearborn Heights. And I'd like to invite anyone who wants to come or suggest speakers. I have September almost scheduled and I will announce in our next meeting who will be there for August. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're happy if you want. If you don't want, I'll take it.
Okay, is there any other public comment at this time?
Madam Chair.
Councilman?
I moved here during the meeting.
No. No, no, it's not public comments. Now we got to have opened up the citizen.
No, it is open to public comments. Because that, she was the last one for.
It's still public comments, correct?
Yeah.
Just public comments.
Yeah, it is. I said, public comments. Is there?
Waiting for the citizen stuff. Oh. You live in Dearborn Heights?
Can I?
Council Chair?
Yes. Go ahead, please.
Hi, my name is Ash Othman. I live at two seven two three zero Rochelle Street. And there's been a few complaints that I have. My first one's going to be with GFL. I've had an issue before COVID hit. I understand they have something electronically where they're picking up, they're dropping our garbage cans and leaving the garbage there and nobody's coming to pick it up. I have to go outside and pick it up myself. I've had several times where they've not picked up my trash. What am I supposed to do? I do have a five-year-old, I have a husband, we have trash that accumulates. We're just restocking, we're getting maggots, we're getting bugs. And it's not the first time, this has happened before COVID. Not to mention the issue I had with the flood. And my house was the only house on my street that got hit. I reached out to Tom, so I reached out to Bill Bazin. I appreciate them trying to get out to GFL. GFL finally came out, I want to say maybe last week after my grass was covered in maggots.
Yeah, that's not okay.
I'm sorry to hear that.
It's not okay. And I get it, it's up to you guys who we get as trash, but I definitely know a lot of residents, including myself, and I know you guys are all residents of Dearborn Heights. We want GFL out of here. I'm sorry, I will pay more tax money to have somebody else come and do my trash than GFL because they are rude. I mean, I have had a few that are polite, but when you're parked blocking our street for no reason, sitting in your guys' trucks, how do you want me to get into my house? And I'm not the only one, there's a ton of people on my street and my neighborhood that have these issues with GFL. And when you guys are, when they're knocking over those trashes, then guess what? They should get out and clean it up. There's no reason that they should sit there until one of us comes home from work or school and then have to clean it up. That's not appropriate. I don't think that's right. We pay a lot of tax money. Second thing is the flood. My home flooded in two thousand and fourteen, my home then flooded in two thousand and seventeen. Every time there's a sewer backup, my house is the only house on the street that gets hit, which is Rochelle. This is the first time when we got hit in June, which I know a lot of everybody got hit and I apologize that everybody got hit. We lost our rights to have sewer backup because the city wouldn't take ownership the prior two times this happened. The city said, no, there's nothing we're going to do, we won't write a letter to your insurance. Our insurance then denied us to have sewer backup insurance due to this issue. I definitely want to thank Tom, Bill, Lee, and I actually spoke with the fire department that day because we thought our house was going to blow up because of how bad the flood got with our furnace and the gas smell. My issue is what are you guys going to do for the sewers? How are you guys going to do this? Because it's not, if I'm the only house on my street getting hit, there's something going on. And there's a bigger problem than, I've seen the sewers get cleaned, I will give that. But there's an issue that needs to get fixed and we're paying high tax dollars. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our, our B E. engineer have a response to that.
So just, when you indicated that you're the only house on the street that got flooded, normally if that's the case, then you can be almost hundred percent sure to look at your lead line from the house to the, to the city sewers. And that's normally the case. If no one else is flooded, that means the city's pipe is not at capacity. That means you're not able to, to convey the water or the sewers from your house to the city pipe. And that, I highly encourage you to get someone like Roto Ruder to take that because I can't use public money on the private tab. So you'll, you'll have to clean your.
They said it's the sewers, our sewers, and when our sewers, I have videos, when our sewers back up, we get everything that's damaged. My entire basement was damaged, FEMA was offering twelve hundred dollars. What's twelve hundred dollars going to do for my, my damage?
If this, okay.
He denied me.
Listen, I appreciate you guys helping, but I'm just saying like, it's not fair. Right? I'm going to pay for it when they're telling me it's the sewer.
Okay.
Council Chair?
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
Ray Muscat, just to let you know, I'm your neighbor right around the block from you. And her sewers are the same ones that we have and, because they're right through our backyards. And people on Havlock flooded with those same sewers. So it's just not her house. It's a whole area there that flooded.
Havlock, Rochelle, nobody else on Rochelle got flooded. On Rochelle and Sheehan?
Yeah.
When you're going straight down, nobody else got flooded except for.
Well, I'm just saying on Havlock, people got flooded. So you guys are on the same pipe as we are. You're right around the block from me. What street you on?
Rochelle.
Yeah, you're right around the block from me. I mean, literally around the block. Okay? So our backyards meet up down the road. Okay? So, but the other thing, I know my time was up here, but I promised someone that I would bring something up. This is not directed at any one candidate, but please make sure that your signs are in the proper place. People are calling me complaining that signs are put on city property along Ford Road and in residential areas. I promised this person I would bring it up. So I came up here to speak about this right now. So if you have signs, please let the people know. I've been moving some signs and putting them where they belong, but then people get mad at me and I decided I better stop that. And so, general audience, please do not put signs on city-owned property. They must be on your own property. So that's, I forgot to say that up there, so I came here. Thank you. Well, can someone discuss what the city property is? Well, the city property is anything that's, you know, from the sidewalk to the street. Okay? And that's even on, you have businesses also. And then one other quick question. I know we have a tree ordinance. Somebody cut a tree down with a permit and they said that they would plant a new tree. The person wants to know how long they have before they plant the tree and can they plant it on their own property? So if someone can answer that question, that would be great.
Next.
Thank you, Ray. My name is Steve Dopkowsky. I live in Dearborn and I want to share a couple pieces of information. Problem you're having with garbage and rubbish pickup with your contractor has been going on in Dearborn. It started even before COVID. Instead of picking up rubbish on a Thursday, they were picking it up as late on a Saturday. This past week, instead of picking up yard waste and rubbish on Thursday, they picked it up on Monday. So you're not alone. City of Dearborn, one of the things they did is they hired large dump trucks, these gravel haulers. And they came in with really large front-end loaders and with a crew of people to throw everything into loaders to put it on the dump trucks. They were not using trash trucks to pick up all this carpeting and furniture and paneling and so forth. So the problem you're having with a contractor is probably a year and a half ago, there was a shortage of workers. Now there's a shortage of workers for a different reason. So I don't know what the solution is. Second thing I wanted to mention, too, you were talking about Warren Valley. You have right here a resource in part of the community at Henry Ford College. I went back to college a few years ago in the culinary program. And technically, I'm still a student. I never took my computer class in, so I can't graduate. And I first went there 60 years ago. So they have a very, very fine culinary program. It's considered one of the top 10 in the country, believe it or not. And it was rated that way a few years ago nationally. They have 80 to 90 students every semester. They offer a four-year degree program, hotel and restaurant management, as well as culinary cooking training. And they're accredited. I think the city, if they're concerned about the banquet facilities at the golf course, might want to contact Henry Ford College and see if you can partner with them. And they can use that training, your facility as part of their training for banquet service. So I'm sure that, knowing the chefs there and an aggressive new president at the college, it's something I would look into. You don't need people who are home cooks trying to serve 300, 400 people at a dinner. You need professional people doing it. Because cooking for a large number of people is much different than cooking at home. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? At this time?
Madam Chair.
Second? Who's second?
Right here, we have nobody here.
Sorry.
Forgotten one, as usual. Sorry about that. I just wanted to come up here real quick because Bill, District Ordinance Enforcement and Control, I'm speaking as the Director of Ordnance Enforcement and Control. I just wanted to come up here and thank Councilman Muscat. A lot of the council members stopped by and bring issues to my attention. I just wanted to thank Councilman Muscat for bringing up our staffing shortage issue that we're experiencing right now. I wanted to thank HR Director Elizabeth Sabota Perry for getting somebody hired full-time like in record time. HR has been awesome. It was like, it was so quick with the help of the mayor as well. I just wanted to touch on a few issues and I'll wrap it up here. The tree issue that Councilman Muscat brought up would be go through DPW. The tree, they deal directly with that. They're experts. 791-6000 is the number for DPW. We've been working diligently despite the fact we're short-staffed. I'd like to throw a quick shout out to my, the members of my staff, everybody, the few that I have. They've been working very hard. And they're out doing enforcements, focusing on grass and blight. That's one of the mayor's main focuses. It has been. We've been working diligently. There are some issues with the court process, I think mostly because of COVID still, but they're still getting stuff done in a timely manner. I did reach out, Corporation Counsel Miyaki on that, a separate issue that Muscat brought up. That's something separate. I just want to let you know that we were working on that. We also have our ordinance officers are out spotting flood debris. So if they see stuff, they're reporting it. We're forwarding all that information to the mayor's office to try to get stuff picked up. Please keep the campaign signs out of the, between the curb and the sidewalk. They do not belong there. Councilman Muscat brought that up. I wanted to mention that as well. If you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call, 313-791-3497. You can send us an email, ordinance@ci.dearborn-heights.mi.us. That comes right off my tongue. I say it so frequently. And also on Trash Day, obviously, we're having a ton of issues right now with the flood debris, trash pickup. Please keep your vehicles off the street. I'm surprised that didn't really come up today. But please remember that. And again, if you have any questions or concerns, please reach out to us. And with that, I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you, Council Chair.
Thank you. So do I hear a motion to?
One more, Madam Chair.
Got to hold the motion. Hi, this is an ad hoc begin. I live in Military Hills on Rosetta Street. My concerns are not personal. Based on the catastrophic situations that the city lives with, they may seem silly. Five or six years ago, the city paved Military Hills subdivision in two years, one a year apart. The problem is a jurisdictional problem. On Ford Road, the major entrance into the subdivision is that Rosetta Street. Ford Road is a.
State road.
A state road. It's maintained by the county, so the city has no jurisdiction. However, the approach was never paved. So this wonderful improvement of the pavement, nobody owns the approach. However, when the north end of the subdivision was paved, the contractor paved the approach, which goes to Warren, which I believe should be a county road. So guess what the city does? We have now 50 to 75 patches on that 20-foot of approach that comes into the subdivision. Nobody owns that. If somebody is patching it, it's not the city's business. Believe me, the taxpayers that live in Military Hills, me just knocking on doors in that neighborhood, and here the number of what they're paying for taxes is shocking.